All right. It is December and thirteenth day of December to be exact, and we're so delighted to be able to come together tonight, and we would like to call to order this FY 2023-2024 public hearing for our school operating budget. And as we call ourselves to order tonight in our meeting, our purpose exclusively for gathering is to hear about the FY 2023-2024 school operating budget. And so at this time, I would like to ask my colleagues for approval of the agenda for the public hearing.
The move that we approve the agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Carter. Moved by Dr. Carter, seconded by Dr. Day. Any further questions or discussion on the approval of the agenda for the public hearing? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
School Board Member, Ms. Preston.
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Trost.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Senhai.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
And School Board Member, Dr. Day.
Yes.
And School Board Member, Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this season and hour of our country and community is never redundant to do our pledge of allegiance, so I would like us to do that as well for our public hearing.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Members of the Board, and to the public in attendance. We will now move to Section C of our public hearing, and I'm going to ask that Dr. Edwards would lead us now in our special presentation.
So it's not often that we get to do a special recognition, but we want to definitely do this one in honor of one of our longtime LCS team members.
Yes.
Ms. Barbara Saunders, who works in my office and has been my left hand as she sits next to my right hand, this spinner, and between the two of them, they have done a magnificent job of making sure that Superintendent's Office operates smoothly. And what you may not know about Ms. Saunders, she does a lot of behind-the-scenes work that keeps this operation flowing rather smoothly, including processing volunteer applications. She is helping out with homeschool. She does a lot of work with board policies and making sure that what we said, what we changed, shows up correctly the second meeting around. But she also serves as the Board's Deputy Clerk. Whenever Mrs. Day is not here or unable to attend, it is Ms. Saunders who has filled in, and she has been the Deputy Clerk for quite some time. And it's with sadness but happiness for her that she has announced her retirement, so we wanted to take a moment to just celebrate her and honor her and give the Board an opportunity to just show their appreciation for all the work that she does in Superintendent's Office and also as our Deputy Clerk. And we promise we wouldn't make her cry or make me cry. So, Ms. Saunders.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. I think that you have just crystallized such robust activity, Barbara, across the years, at least as I speak on behalf of the service that I've been able to lend. You have been remarkable, always incredibly knowledgeable of what's going on and ready and available at meetings to lead us in the proper way. And so we are just so excited for you and your future, and we wanted to pause today to make sure that it was not overlooked of our tremendous gratitude for your service. And so Board Members, if there are additional comments, please make them over at this time. Vice Chair?
I think you have said it very well, Dr. Coleman and Dr. Edwards. Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Barbara and I worked together for a number of years, so it is with mixed emotion that I observe this time because unlike a lot of people in this room, I know firsthand how much work she does, how much information she knows, how she can manage to tell you in a kind way that you maybe need to rethink your chain of thought. She is just the best, absolutely the best, and you will be sorely missed.
All right. School Board Member Preston, those comments were right on point. Now, it is the time that we enjoy giving, and so we have some things we would like to give you, Barbara. I've got a card and there's something in the card, and the Vice Chair has something that we're going to bring over. Dr. Edwards, if you could just join us, please, we'd appreciate that. And Barbara, we would like you to stand, and on behalf of a grateful school division, the Lynchburg City Schools, we would like to... And, Dr. Edwards, you would like to say, I would hope you could get a picture, and Barbara, if you want to say anything, you can.
I'll break down. Let me get Dr. Williams' camera.
She could come in.
Could you join us in your horseshoe and get a picture of this?
Keep your flowers.
Well, I want you to do how you feel more comfortable.
(laughter) No, I got you out. He wants you to go. Come in the picture, too.
All right, y'all know the drill, scooting it, scooting it.
For this picture, Tina, could you, are you able to get in the picture as well? Just show such great appreciation and support.
Just say, "Who does that?" Barbara does. Exactly. Who knows that Barbara does?
All right. One, two, three. Oh, looks great.
We love you, Barbara. It's as sincere as can be. Thank you. We probably still be calling on you, okay?
I was gonna say, who's gonna cover?
All right. So, Members of Board, we won't do that today, but we will bring forth appropriate recommendations going forward. But again, Barbara, thank you so much for your service. We love you, and this was from the depths and bottom of our heart. And may you and your family have a wonderful holiday season and a brand-new year. All right. Now, at this time, we're going to now press our way into our operating budget discussion, and Dr. Edwards will come forward along with Ms. Kapazi.
Okay. So this is the public version of the discussion, and just for the record, we do two public hearings on the budget, one early on before we actually craft the budget, and the purpose of that is really to get input from our community members. That's what the purpose of tonight is. But Ms. Kapazi and Dr. Wodoka and Mrs. Pew, who is unable to be here tonight, but our entire team has also been working with principals and directors and other staff to get budget input from the school base and the department-based teams. There are also some things that we just need to consider and remember. Do you remember last year when we were first talking about the salary increases for staff? There was a discussion about it being a minimum of 5%, which we did more than 5% for many of our staff members. We had upwards to 7% and 8% and 9%. But along with that requirement was a two-year deal of 5% year one and 5% year two. So right off the bat, before we even started budget conversation, it's just a reminder to our Board, a reminder to our public, that in the Governor's proposed budget, it was a five-and-five that we need to consider. So our team is definitely working on that minimum of 5% going forward, which is in the second year of this biennium. Some other things that we've heard, before I turn it over to the community that this Board has been also discussing, is increasing the starting hourly rate for our classified employees, and you all have been wonderful over the last few years in constantly increasing that hourly rate. I think we got up to over $13 an hour as we're approaching $15 an hour. So we are going to continue to look at that. I think it was Dr. Gupta who introduced us into the living wage, which is what started it several years ago. So that is still on our discussion table as well. We're always looking for ways to recruit and retain our staff and looking at perks and things that we can offer, including we've done tuition reimbursement. There were some things last year that were in the budget that will probably cycle back this year for consideration under that as well. You've heard presentations from various staff members, and particularly of note, the need for more mental health support and resources for our students that will also help our staff. So there's some discussion that we may be bringing forward. We know that's coming from schools as well, as to how we can support that. Also inherent in our discussions, and I just want to keep everything open, is our facility study. We've had the physical building part of it in terms of that, and now we are moving forward with the educational piece and looking at the grouping and assignment of our students and as well as the educational programming. That may have some budgetary implications for next year and years going forward as well. I would be remiss if I did not represent for my teachers the need for smaller class sizes. And one of the reasons for that is, obviously, you get to know your students. It's a lot more personable when you have smaller class sizes, but that goes back to also just trying to address learning gain and making sure we're meeting every child by name and by need, but helping students with behavior and also addressing some of the significant mental health, mental challenges that our students are also facing. But smaller class sizes are usually obtained by adding more teachers and staff, so that's a consideration there as looking at support staff and teachers and so on and so forth. And then there are just fun things in life that we need to include in our budget that we wish would be going down, but they don't, and that's the price of fuel. We are fortunate to have some electric buses come in our way, but we still have fuel, insurance, health insurance is a topic of conversation that this Board has had, as well as other insurance, liability insurance and so on. The cost for just doing business, electricity, water, sewer, heat, maintenance, legal fees, those things are also things that we would consider. So I say that to say that there are already topics that are on the table for us to discuss and as we make some of our priorities. We want to open it up to the public because we want to hear what your priorities are and what are some things that you would like Lynchburg City Schools to explore, continue, fortify, enhance, or just do brand new. So this is our opportunity to hear from our public, for them to share with us, and our public being not only community members but staff or any other staff members. So with that, I will turn it back to you, Dr. Coleman.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. And so this is our time to listen, and we will be listening very attentively. The construction of a budget, ultimately, $100 million and north of that, and to meet every need that we have, requires this process to include the community, and to those who've come out tonight, we do appreciate your presence. And so persons appearing before the School Board will not be allowed to campaign for public office or promote private business ventures and should not use profanity or vulgar language or gestures, make comments about a public official or an employee that are not related to their official duties, engage in behavior that disrupts the meeting or intimidates others, or address the School Board on issues that do not concern the services, policies, role, and/or responsibilities of the School Board. Individual speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. A speaker representing a group shall limit their comments to five minutes. Representatives shall identify the group at the beginning of their presentation, and a group may have no more than one spokesperson. The total allotted time for public comments at School Board meetings generally is 30 minutes, and public comments are reserved for the public to provide input, and the Board does not respond to comments, answer questions, or otherwise engage in discussion at this time. And so I want to first begin with a name that I have here on our list, and this is regarding the subject of universal pre-K, dealing with the Group Early Childhood Care and Education Committee Bridges to Progress Group. And I think I have Jane Gertie here, the Director of Elizabeth Early Learning Center. Welcome.
Thank you.
And all that are with you, we thank you for being here. Thank you.
Chairman Coleman, Superintendent Edwards, esteemed members of the Lynchburg City School Board and guests, thank you for letting me speak on behalf of the Early Childhood and Care Committee, which was formed from the Poverty to Progress, the Bridges to Progress Initiative from Lynchburg City Council nine years ago. To reduce poverty in Lynchburg, parents need childcare so they can work, and children need to be well-educated to impact their earning power in the future. This committee, our committee, consists of partners from a number of community groups that deal with various aspects of early childhood care and education. These include Lynchburg City Schools, private preschools and childcare centers, United Way, Bright Beginnings, Humankind, Lynn CAG Head Start, Lynchburg Parks and Recreation Neighborhood Centers, Lynchburg Economic Development, the pediatric community, and individual stakeholders and community volunteers. I think we all agree that we share the value that each child in Lynchburg is precious and that we want each one to find success in school and in life and reach his or her full potential. An excellent public school system, well-supported by city leadership, is also a strong economic draw to our region, attracting new businesses, employers, and employees. But developmentally speaking, beginning our education system at age five for a K-12 program is missing an essential part of a child's development, and the resources and energy of our talented teachers is not used to their best advantage when at least 25% of kindergarten students in Lynchburg begin school without a quality preschool experience. Brain development during the first five years of life progresses in an exponential fashion. The data is clear that children who are exposed to more reading, more language-rich experiences, more stimulation from caring adults during the first years of life, enter kindergarten more significantly, significantly more well-equipped to succeed, to read on grade level by third grade, and to achieve success in high school and to graduate. Reading on grade level by third grade is critical because if they are not proficient readers when they begin fourth grade, as much as half of the curriculum that they will be taught will be incomprehensible to them. Beginning school at five is not early enough for our children, and the data is clear that there are not enough pre-K spots available. Governor Youngkin and his administration have made high-quality early childhood education a priority. Our current Secretary of Education, Amy Guidera, said, quote, "Quality early childhood education isn't nice to have, it is a must-have." We know this in our hearts and from personal experiences, but the data also tell us this: "Expanding access and choice through our early childhood education system is one of the greatest investments we can make in our future," unquote. Universal pre-K for all three- and four-year-olds would provide the opportunity for all children to enter kindergarten with important pre-literacy, numeracy, and social-emotional skills to ensure success in school. Universal pre-K will increase our return on our investment in our education system. Universal pre-K should involve existing private preschool providers and can represent the best in public-private partnerships, and universal pre-K would be an economic draw to our city. So our ask for tonight is threefold. One, that Lynchburg City Schools embrace, support, and promote the concept of universal pre-K, increasing the capacity and access to quality, free, pre-K for all three- and four-year-olds in Lynchburg, realizing that this is a goal that will require increased funding on the local level and additional state and federal dollars. Number two, we ask that as many pre-K three- and four-year-old classrooms be added as possible within the current, sorry, can I stop? Within the current budget as the waiting lists are long for both of those groups. And three, at some point, the larger, long-term project of creating universal pre-K will require an overseeing body or a backbone organization to coordinate and utilize all of the existing early childhood resources that are available in Lynchburg to support universal pre-K. These include funds for VPI, public school pre-K, Head Start, mixed delivery, and social services childcare subsidies. We ask that Lynchburg City Schools consider their role in this law-regul project. Through a partnership with the University of Lynchburg Center for Leadership, we are working toward a collective impact model to maximize the effectiveness of these efforts, bring groups out of their silos and together into true collaboration, and measure outcomes to ensure that we are moving the needle toward access to universal pre-K in Lynchburg. Thank you for your attention and consideration, and we hope that we can discuss this further with you at another time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All that you have said tonight has been duly recorded, and we appreciate you sharing those things with us tonight. Thank you, thank you very, very much. As it relates to what I have in front of me, distinguished members of the Board, that was the only person to sign up. Public hearing is scheduled to go until six, and so we will operate tonight at the pleasure of the Board. The first piece I want to ask, is there anyone else here who wanted to speak pertaining to the budget that did not get their name on the sheet? Second thing I'd like to ask the Board, we did receive a request from Christina Bartista, and I apologize if I didn't get the last name correct, with a brief email requesting that that be read tonight. This may not fall in the sequence normally of our public comments at a regular meeting. What is the pleasure of the Board for that to be read? Each of you have the letter, I suspect. What is your pleasure?
I'm fine to have it read. Just for the record, I think we probably all read the email, but if you want it on the record.
Okay.
That way everybody...
No objection? All right. Yes, ma'am, I'm hearing you, Dr. Carter.
No, we stated for the regular public comments that you could do it in a voicemail and/or you could, what's the other option?
I think we were limited to voicemails and in-person.
In-person.
Yeah. So that's why I'm asking the Board, do we have the time? If we don't, I'm not going to read it if you have an objection to do.
I can make a motion to suspend those rules for this evening only, if you wish.
I'll second that motion.
All right. It's been moved and seconded for a suspension of the rules. That requires more than a simple majority, and so two-thirds. Thank you, Dr. Day. And so is there any further questions or discussion on the motion? Then, Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll that we're suspending the rules in order to have this email read publicly tonight.
School Board Member, Ms. Preston.
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Trost.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Senhai.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter.
No.
School Board Member, Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Day.
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Eight to one, and that's a two-third, and thank you, all of you, for expressing yourselves and rightfully so. I'll attempt to read this. Dear Board Members... Dear board members, I would like to have this letter of concern read at the board meeting on Tuesday, December the thirteenth at 5:00 P.M. My family and I are new to the Lynchburg City School System as my son started kindergarten in the fall. We had to make careful considerations about where we would send him, and ultimately decided to apply for Darrington Elementary School. While we're happy with our choice, I was more than hesitant to utilize the school transportation due to concerns that I have heard from other parents and learning that there are no bus assistance. My husband and I have had to rearrange our work schedules to be able, to be available for drop-off and pickup. With the added concern of no option for and before aftercare, this has put a large burden on our small family. The bus drivers already have a great responsibility of safely transporting the students, and I do not believe we should expect them to also handle any discipline or student-related concerns while they are managing this important task. For this reason, I request the transportation budget be increased, for a higher wage for bus aides on all elementary buses. In addition, I request for it to be mandatory for all elementary school buses to have teacher aides. Thank you for your consideration, and that again is from Christina Bartista. All right. There are no other comments that I am aware of, no one from our powerful audience tonight has suggested they have any additional comments. Are there any comments of the board at this time relative to the hearing? And another thing I would be interested in, typically, if we say our work session is to start at six, that somewhat has some legal implications. And so, it is, it is yet five-twenty-six, so I don't know if there is anyone who would want to start the public work session earlier, or if we're able to even do that. But, yeah, so, any other comments from members of the board regarding the public hearing?
Was there another letter to be read to, by someone, last name starts, begins with an S?
Yes, but that, that person didn't, nah, I didn't, maybe I didn't read it correctly, School Board Member Carter, but I, I didn't...
Oh, Danielle.
Yeah, I didn't sense that that person was asking for it to be read at this public hearing for the budget.
Since I would like my email and this email to be read at the budget meeting tonight.
Oh, it does? Well, then, I still deeply apologize. Let me see, which one is that?
Name it, one-thirty-eight.
And that's different than what I just read?
Danielle S.A.R.C.H.E.T.
Okay.
If you read that email that has a student's name, maybe...
Yeah, that was a five-year-old, yeah.
But she, she does explicitly ask that it be read at the budget meeting.
Okay, thank you.
So we'd have to read it, but not mention student names.
Okay, well, what I am going to, as chair, since I think I have that right, who has it, and can you read it with the understanding that you're not going to disclose student names and information if it's included in that email?
Not just voting not to read them. So I'm not going to volunteer. But I just thought, since she wrote it, it would be fair to vote.
Dr. Day can read it. Dr. Day, we have confidence you can read it, please.
Is it appropriate to read the name of the person that submitted this letter?
Before you, Dr. Brennan, do you have a concern?
I'm just, I'm just asking, because I'd like to have a little discussion on this. Is this, does this also need a motion to say we're going to approve to read this, or we buy other motion?
And I think that we have suspended the rules for that, for this public hearing in its entirety.
I think the motion was for this meeting, not for the proceeding.
Just for me.
So can I, can I just ask a question to the board, just as a question? So if we're talking about the email that was sent on Friday, December ninth, there are, there are some comments in there that I'm not sure is really appropriate to be read in the public, in a public session, and I think this was sort of directed to the board and to the administration to address a specific topic related to the buses. I'm really not, so I'm a little uncomfortable with two things, mostly with some of the terms that are in the letter.
I understand your concern, yes.
And, and second of all, that I'm not sure this really was directed to the budget as it was to a concern that the person had with this.
If it's what I read, it didn't appear to me at all, that's why I didn't mention it, but my board members are saying, Dr. Brennan, that it is a request. So, Dr. Day, if you read it, I'm depending on you to determine what it is.
I would not put that...
Well, and I, could you direct me, I must be, can you direct me specifically where it says that they wish to have this read?
There's a, there's an email from today.
This is an email I received.
I'm looking, okay, that was the second one, then.
Yeah, there's some, there's one from today saying, please ask that that email be read.
I can give you an edited version of it that leaves out the specifics that you're referring to.
Can you just go to the budget request? I think that that's what it, if you just do that.
Okay. Let's see, that, just, I'm going to just read the last two paragraphs then.
Very good.
I understand there is a bus shortage, but this, referring to the earlier part of the letter, which we've decided is not appropriate to read in public, is something I think should be done. How can I assist with this? I would love to see a bus aide on each elementary-age bus. If that is not doable, at least the preschool and kindergarten buses. I love the LCS system, and I hope my son can go all the way through, but as a parent, I'm terrified, and so are others. How is my involvement best utilized? Could it be bringing this up in school board meetings, going to the media for more budget, specifically for the buses? Could it be recruiting others in Leadership Lynchburg Local Nonprofits to be part of this? I'm proud of my son, but he was too young to go through something like that, and if he had a bus aide on the bus, I believe it would have never happened, or at least the first time. Well, I don't want to read that part.
That's right.
I look forward to hearing your response. So the, the budget aspect is the same as the previous letter about requests for bus aides?
Thank you, Dr. Day, and thank you for your willingness to read that portion thereof, and I think that would bring to a close the comments that we have heard, and we appreciate them at this time. Dr. Edwards, any closing comments regarding the hearing?
No, I did take notes regarding what I heard about universal pre-K for three- and four-year-olds, and just want to also remind the public, and the sport knows that we have invested in pre-K, both through our VPI program for four-year-olds, but most recently in the last two years for three-year-olds as well. So we do have a couple three-year-old classes, but by no means meeting the needs. And with regard to the other two comments for additional bus aides on the school buses, that was also something that had been brought to our attention, and I know our, our Transportation Director is not here, but if she were, she would be nodding, saying, you know, in addition to needing more bus drivers, we know we have a bus driver shortage, we also are seeing that with our bus assistance and our bus aides to increase the bu, the bus aides on our buses, particularly the elementary-run buses and pre-K buses as well. So I just appreciate the public bringing that to our attention and making sure that they share that information with the board as well. In the second half, when we get to the budget work session, we'll talk a little more deeply about some of the things that are, for discussion and for topic for us to discuss.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards, and of course, oh, very good. Dr. Gupta, go right ahead.
I just wanted to make sure, Dr. Edwards, you and your team is committed to taking us through this budget cycle and the future budget cycles to come.
Yes, Dr. Gupta, there, there does seem to be a rumor that I didn't start, that somewhere I may not be here, or I may be leaving, so to the folks who are concerned about that, no, I do not plan on going anywhere, and not only am I taking you through this budget, but Dr. Whitaker and I and our entire team, we have a facility study that we need to take you through, and we have some big plans for the future of Lynchburg City Schools and our students. So I, I am definitely here for the long run, and very excited about the work that we are doing with not only this budget, but future budgets, future work, and I'm going to say it out there, new schools, whatever the possibility holds, for us, just really excited about the work that we can do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta, thank you for those comments, Dr. Edwards, in which we all are so supportive and thankful to hear, and thank you for coming out tonight. We, we really are very vested, all around this horseshoe are individuals who are spending countless hours as it relates to the board's responsibility and the finalization of this budget. We heard from our young people last week of many concerns that they expressed, and so we're collecting all of the information. Thank you all very much, and members of the board, this will adjourn our public hearing, and we will reconvene at 6:00 P.M. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you all for coming.
We're liking to call now our December the 13th, 2022 Lynchburg City School Board Work Session to order. And our first order of business for tonight is the approval of the agenda featured on board docs for tonight's work session is their motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Preston, seconded by Dr. Carter that we will approve the agenda that we have for tonight. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
School Board Member, Ms. Preston.
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Chast.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Senha.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Day.
Yes.
School Board Member.
Yes.
Motion carries now to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And of course, anything could happen, but this will probably be our last official meeting for the year of 2022. So let us end as we began with the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance. The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The more you say that, there's some powerful words there. And thank you, members of the board, for your service to our community, each and every one of us. Section C for our agenda items tonight, and the first is for action, the high school program of studies. We had a healthy discussion last time. Dr. Edwards, if you could bring on Mr. Coleman.
Absolutely, yes. So as you said, we had a healthy discussion, and Mr. Coleman is here again to entertain any additional questions and also if there was any follow-up that you want to share regarding program of studies.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards, and good evening to the board.
Good evening.
Good evening. I would like to just briefly reiterate my appreciation to Maria Yeager and the team who worked on the revisions that you see before you in the program study. While this version, there are no revisions on the version you had before you. This is the same version that was presented at our previous board meeting. But again, I appreciate the work that went into engaging counselors and teachers and administrators to make the revisions that you see in this version of the program studies. Also, I want to appreciate the board for the discussion that we were able to have last week, and want to remind the board that it is my intention and certainly the intention of the administration and all of us who support our students to have high expectations to support student achievement. And it is our firm belief that broadening the net and reaching more students is showing good faith toward those high expectations, and would certainly welcome again any feedback or input that you have for that.
All right, Dr. Day.
Yeah, I raised a number of issues about this last time, and I want to come back to them. One of the things that I raised some questions.
We'd like to call now our December the thirteenth, twenty twenty-two Lynchburg City School Board Work Session to Order. And our first order of business for tonight is the approval of the agenda featured on Board Docs for tonight's work session. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Preston, seconded by Dr. Carter, that we will approve the agenda that we have for tonight. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
School Board Member, Ms. Preston?
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Chast.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Senha?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Day?
Yes.
School Board Member?
Yes.
Motion carries now to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And of course, anything could happen, but this will probably be our last official meeting for the year of twenty twenty-two. So let us end as we began with the federal leases.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The more you say that, there's powerful words there. And thank you, members of the Board, for your service to our community, each and every one of us. Section C for our agenda items tonight, and the first is for action, the high school program of studies. We had a healthy discussion last time. Dr. Edwards, if you could bring on Mr. Coleman.
Absolutely, yes. So as you said, we had a healthy discussion, and Mr. Coleman is here again to entertain any additional questions, and also if there was any follow-up that you want to share regarding program of studies.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards, and good evening to the Board.
Good evening.
Good evening. I would like to just briefly reiterate my appreciation to Maria Jaeger and the team who worked on the revisions that you see before you in the program study. While this version, there are no revisions on the version you had before you. This is the same version that was presented at our previous board meeting. But again, I appreciate the work that went into engaging counselors and teachers and administrators to make the revisions that you see in this version of the program studies. Also, I want to appreciate the Board for the discussion that we were able to have last week, and want to remind the Board that it is my intention, and certainly the attention of the administration and all of us who support our students, to have high expectations to support student achievement. And it's our firm belief that broadening the net and reaching more students is showing good faith toward those high expectations, and would certainly welcome again any feedback or input that you have for that.
All right, Dr. Day?
Yeah, I raised a number of issues about this last time, and I want to come back to them. One of the things that I raised some questions about was the language concerning the governor's school. And I saw Steve Smith, the director, on Wednesday when I was at their meeting, and Dr. Gupta stood, and I showed him the revised language and asked what he thought. And he did not share my concern. He echoed what was said here, that he wasn't concerned about the change. He welcomed a larger applicant pool, said that they do screen and advise the applicants very carefully to make sure that they understand what they're committing to. So he was actually, he preferred the new language to the way it was before. So as far as I'm concerned, that completely resolves any concerns I have about that section.
And I'll just comment at that point, and I as well, so.
That is fascinating, and I'm happy to hear that.
So I do have a couple other aspects of it. So on page, what page is this? This is page five of the actual document, page seven of the PDF file. There's this list of advanced courses offered through LCS, some of which are being removed according to the proposed revisions. And the explanation that we heard was that these have either very low or no enrollment, and that's why they're being.
Can I clarify?
Yes, please.
So it is true that those courses do have very low or no enrollment. These courses will still be offered, I know last, and you do see these courses, they appear in the program of studies.
Yes, that was my question.
And they're taught by, so like, one, you'll see University of Lynchburg, so you won't, so how they're offered and where they're taught through. They're offered through Lynchburg City Schools, but not necessarily by our faculty or our teachers. But you do see these courses, they do appear.
That was my question, because I counted at least four of them that are mentioned farther down in the specific course listing. So removing them here doesn't mean they're no longer offered, apparently. Is that right? What does it mean?
That's correct. Those courses will still be, will still be offered. And again, they may be offered through, again, an example that I can share is the offer through the University of Lynchburg.
Okay. So they would be available, like, as a dual enrollment course with University of Lynchburg?
That's correct.
Is that right? Okay. Okay. Then I think that resolves my concern there. Let's see, there were two other things, if I can find them here, on page sixty of the PDF file, page fifty-eight of the actual document. This is for the STEM Academy, the junior year, and the, the third bullet there strikes out Applied Calculus and adds Precalculus II. And I guess I'd like to understand why. Someone who can successfully complete Applied Calculus I, I would think that would verify their competence in the material of Precalculus. So I don't see, I don't understand a justification for removing Applied Calculus.
And in full transparency, I was not a part of, I know that this was the result of significant conversation with members who lead their math departments, and so this was a decision and a recommendation that came from those faculty members. I hesitate to represent.
I understand.
The spirit or the nature beyond that, but I will say we trust the expertise and the recommendations of our teacher leaders who participated in that discussion.
Okay. So I don't know what to do with this at this point, since we can't, I, I'm not able to know what the rationale for this is. And let me go on to my last point.
So, would I interject? So it looks like it used to be Precalculus I or Applied Calculus I, and they added the and two?
Yes.
Okay. I can't appreciate.
That's what it looks like. The green and two looks like in addition, and the or Applied Calculus I is struck out. I, for my part, I don't see why leaving them both there wouldn't be fine. It seems to me it's a stronger program. If a student can satisfy this requirement with Applied Calculus I. So I would suggest that we leave it as it wa, this item as it was before the revision. But as you say, neither you nor I were party to the conversation that led to this, so I'm not sure what to do with my concern. The last thing I was going to mention, yesterday, well, at our legislative breakfast last week, there was a lot of discussion of this J-LARK report, and Delegate Wendell Walker suggested that we actually listen in to yesterday's J-LARK hearing. And one of the things that was reported to that hearing is that there is another report to J-LARK about dual enrollment fees for high school students taking dual enrollment courses. And the upshot of that report, at this point, it's just a report to the J-LARK Committee, was that with only rare exceptions, there's no justification for charging students fees, special fees to take a dual enrollment course. The way this reads right now is Lynchburg City Schools covers fees for ten students per class. But if the recommendation of that J-LARK report would be incorporated here, we would just cover tuition, or at least cover fees regardless of how many students are in a dual enrollment class. So I don't know, maybe that's something we have to wait and see what happens with the...
Yes. So there's a lot of conversation about dual enrollment in different divisions, some pay portions, parts, none at all.
Yeah.
And that is a larger conversation that we have taken back to say, could we get some consistency here where, you know, our ultimate recommendation would be similar to J-LARK, no, let's not charge the students for it. So it goes beyond just what's in our program of studies, and it's more of a bigger push to what's going on with community colleges and dual enrollment. And that's, we've been talking about that for quite some time now.
Okay. So then regarding this document tonight, it's maybe premature to suggest a change based on it?
Yes, yes. And also, Dr. Day, just going back to what you discussed with the Applied Calculus, and I'm trying, I'm trying to quickly look through, and I have not looked to the depth that I probably should to answer your question, but I'm wondering if that, there's a name change. As I look under the mathematics section on page seventeen where they're listing all the courses, I see the Advanced College Precalc I, Advanced College Precalc II. So that might be a question that we ask Mrs. Jaeger, if that change is due to a name change in course, or is that, are we eliminating a course that actually exists? Because some of the, I know that when we were working with some of the courses, we changed some of the names previously. So I just want to make sure that that's not, a name change is what might also explain it, since we are taking a question back to Mrs. Jaeger.
Yeah, yeah. So I didn't, that didn't occur to me to look at the Applied Calculus I course listing to see.
To see if it's...
So I don't, I don't think I can do that on the fly here, so I'm not quite sure what to do with my concern, maybe just, I mean, I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to oppose the rest of the adjustments to this document, but I'd like to get a resolution of why. Maybe I can just put in a request that somebody give me an explanation of why they wanted to remove that. And if we're really not satisfied with the rationale, then I guess we would reinstitute that maybe on the next time around for this document.
Yeah, I mean, that, if an explanation for that is necessary for the document in the program of studies to be approved, I don't understand.
I don't want to hold the whole document up over that one issue, but I would like to have an explanation.
I can assure you that you will have an explanation to that.
Okay. That's the end of my comments.
And Dr. Day, just duly noted, the clerk has it, and we appreciate your investment in that, and so we'll get the response to you. All right, are you yielding the floor to Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Right ahead.
I want it.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman, for your presentation last time. For page four, like I brought it up last time, we specifically mentioned two colleges or universities where we send our students or they take courses at. Is it possible to expand that so maybe any college or university which has an MOU with LCS, our students can take courses there? So that will open up a whole array of courses which Virginia Tech offers, technical STEM courses which our students can take, which may be limited, or any VCCS, as I mentioned last time, CVCC may not have it, but Virginia College Community System, VCCS, may have it, and everything being online, or most of the courses being online, that makes it very accessible.
Yes. And to reiterate the point that I made last time, is it's our intentions and our efforts right now to seek out those partnerships and those agreements. So this is not the ceiling, the institutions that we have listed here, and it's not our limitations, but that our intentions are to expand those partnerships. So what we have listed here are the universities that we have those agreements with, and as we continue to establish more agreements, we'll be sure to indicate that in the program of studies.
So is it possible, if I bring a motion to change with the assurance that the language will be changed, not too specific, to include that any university or college which has an MOU with LCS, our students will be able to take courses? Is that doable? As they come along, that will not restrict the schools holding till the next year to be able to offer courses?
But Dr. Gupta, I would prefer if you would address that to the Chair. Mr. Coleman, if you want to make a motion, the Chair is very interested in hearing your motion.
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion that we open up these courses to any college or university which has an MOU with Lynchburg City Schools.
All right. To the point that would impact the high school program of studies, is there a second to Dr. Gupta's motion?
I'll second it.
Second to the motion for the purpose of discussion, would you like to elaborate any further on why you are bringing such a motion, or are you rest on what you said?
So it doesn't restrict our students to, so if I am a particular university, my scope of courses I offer are limited to which are in my catalog. And, but if I have, so it's like you go to a restaurant for, which are very good in burgers, you go to the second restaurant, which is good in burritos, right? Go to a third restaurant, which is very good in cheesecake, but the first restaurant doesn't offer cheesecake, and you want cheesecake, but guess what? You're stuck. You cannot have cheesecake at that restaurant. But having an MOU with different schools will provide you that flexibility of array of courses you can take. So I think it's good for our students where they have a choice. They are not restricted by what the restaurant offers them, they are restricted by their effort to walk to the next place. You see what I'm saying? And explore their menu.
I think, may I?
You please, you made the second, please.
I, as I recall, last time, we talked about an approval process of some kind for giving a student approval to take something that didn't quite fit into this. I wonder if that would be a mechanism we could use to adopt what Dr. Gupta is proposing, that put some language in here, that courses at institutions which have an active MOU with Lynchburg City Schools can be considered via the approval process on page, whatever it is.
See, the simpler we make, better it is, because this document, people read four, five pages, and they see if they want to go to the next page. So seventy-page document is for nerds like me, but cool people do the four, five pages preamble for the superintendent dual degree overview on the page four, and they see, I got these courses and this university, and that's it.
All right. I would like, School Board Member Preston, I think she may have a concern or question, then Dr. Edwards would like to weigh in.
So what I think I'm hearing you say is that you want to change the language so that it says something like, students enrolled in these courses may earn college credit from Community College, University of Lynchburg, and other colleges with which Lynchburg City Schools has an MOU that have been approved.
And so I'm taking specific names, any university of college, or college or university which has an MOU with Lynchburg City Schools. And they can expand the list of those MOUs, provide a banner, poster, anywhere where we have the MOU, so it's an evolving document. As we sign more MOUs, the faculty knows it, the students know it, these are the institutions LCS has MOUs with, and you can take courses. Because with online, a lot of science, technology courses are readily available. You know, Visual Basic is a common language, which I won't see, but it's a very useful language to learn. So if you're taking an online course, you have it. You're not restricted, as I mentioned, by the menu of the restaurant, you're restricted by your effort to go out there and get what you want.
And if I'm, if I'm just giving clarity for the purpose of the Board, I didn't perceive this motion to necessarily be attached to the particulars of the high school program of studies versus just a general understanding about the MOU process. Is that correct?
No.
No.
He doesn't want dual enrollment courses limited only to CVCC or University of Lynchburg. He wants any course from institution of higher education with which we have a MOU to be an option for a dual enrollment course.
Okay, well, then I'm wondering whether or not we should have entertained a motion for the high school program of studies first, then ask for an amendment to that.
That's right.
Does that, does that make sense, what I'm suggesting to the Board? We haven't need, we don't have a motion on the floor for the high school program of studies, but we're digging into the high school program of studies to make changes.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
Have you drawn my motion?
All right, thank you. And then we'll come back to it. Dr. Edwards, you want to say?
Yeah, I was just trying to go back to something that Mrs. Pugh said last time, that at one point we were looking to explore also an MOU with Randolph College, and I think they took, changed their semesters to be, take two for seven weeks is their, their program. So it didn't work out. So the possibility of getting additional MOUs with other institutions is a real possibility, so I understand what you're saying. We also, and I don't know that we currently have a procedural process, and remember, this is going to kick in starting January, February, when we come back. Students, particularly juniors, usually start with their enrollment. The difference between taking a dual enrollment course where I am physically present on that campus, going to a live course versus an online course, and then how do you vet the quality of mostly online courses is what, what I'm talking about. So I don't think we have a process to do that yet, and I cannot promise you that we'd have one when we come back for break, because nobody's allowed to work over break, we really want a good break. So to the degree that I'm understanding that you want us to have flexibility in this point, any, this point now and even future, any MOUs that we have with universities, and they can have time limits, too. So there's some come and some go to open up that process. I think, I think we're not, we're in agreement with that. How we word it in the program of studies is what you want the specificity on, so that it just, that it's clear to anybody looking that first you need a MOU, and then you can have any college.
Because it has financial implications, too, as the, the J-LARK recommendation is accepted, and you open up the floodgates to reimburse everybody, then if I have an MOU with Longwood, it's a state school, it's in-state tuition, that may be different than a private school tuition. So for LCS Board, it has if financial implication in long term, as the policies change in Richmond, what's the trickle-down effect or domino effect for us in future?
Okay, thank, thank you very much. So we're still on C1, and we had a motion, and the maker of the motion has withdrawn that motion, and we've heard the discussion on the high school program of studies thus far, with concerns presented by Dr. Day. Is there anyone else that wants to comment on the high school program of studies? Dr. Brennan?
I'd like, I'd like to thank Mr. Coleman and his team for the excellent work they've done on this curriculum of studies, and I'd like to make a motion that the Board approves the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four high school program of studies.
Second.
It's been moved by Dr. Brennan that we would approve the high school program of studies for the stated year, seconded by Dr. Carter. And at this time, is there any further questions or discussion, and this would be the time for such?
I, I do have a question.
Please.
Assuming we approve this, if the kind of thing we were just discussing, if a new MOU was developed between LCS and, I mentioned Longwood, could that take effect before this time next year, even though it didn't appear in the program of studies?
Yeah, I believe when we were negotiating our partnership to do the CTE Academy, it actually happened after we did the program of studies, but we still offered that opportunity to our kids. So we just kind of said, this is the print version of the program of studies, now we also have a...
An addendum to it or something.
Yeah, an addendum to it.
So that's a way that this could be handled. If we approve this, and then we do develop an MOU with another institution in short order, then that opportunity can be opened up, even though it doesn't appear in the print here, it would appear as a supplement to this or an addendum or something.
And I think that's why I said any institution with which Lynchburg City Schools has an MOU, because that kind of leaves you open to develop an MOU and would include the new, the new schools as well.
Okay.
Would it not?
Yeah, well, understood. I think the maker of the motion earlier withdrew with the understanding that there could be an opportunity to bring that back up with an amendment, and so I do want to give that person the courtesy. Is that still your pleasure, sir?
I'm not going to bring the amendment, but I'm going to vote no on this to, just to make sure that we proceed with aggressively to facilitate those MOUs with other schools.
Thank you. All right, any further questions or discussion? You know, I, I simply want to say as chair, thank you, Mr. Coleman, for the work that you're doing. And again, I said at the last meeting, the approach that you're taking to this, I think that this program of studies reflects that. In my personal opinion, as we go forward, which we are doing now, we need to continue to listen to students, find out what is going to be best for them in their high school program of studies going forward to make them ready for a 21st century global economy. And I have utmost confidence in your ability to do that, listen to kids and, and the staff to do the right thing in this board. Dr. Gupta?
And my vote today has nothing to do with your ability and your presentation, Mr. Coleman. You're doing an excellent job, but I just want to make sure that the district, as Lynchburg City Schools, will choose those MOUs.
Understood, thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? And Madam Clerk, if you please, call the role.
School Board member, Ms. Preston?
Yes.
School Board member, Mr. Charles?
Yes.
School Board member, Dr. Senha?
Yes.
School Board member, Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
School Board member, Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
School Board member, Dr. Carter?
Yes.
School Board member, Dr. Gupta?
No.
School Board member, Dr. Day?
I'm going to abstain.
And School Board member, Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to one with one abstain.
Thank you. Mr. Coleman, move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you so kindly. All right, C2, LCS tutoring and mentoring. I think we're back at it again.
Yes.
Dr. Edwards, go ahead.
We don't, we don't give Mr. Coleman a break, but I've asked Mr. Coleman and Ms. Reeves to join us and talk a little bit about some of the tutoring and mentoring efforts that are going on throughout the division. I think the last time I talked to you a little bit about Desi's program that they had before school where the teachers were tutoring, but Ms. Reeves and Mr. Coleman will talk to you a little bit more about some additional things that are going on in our school. So Ms. Reeves?
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, Mr. Coleman and I will share information with you about mentoring and tutoring at LCS. I've also asked Crystal Grant, who's our supervisor of student engagement and mentoring, and Dr. Kathy Dills to join us, and I regret that Crystal is under the weather. She left work and had to seek medical attention, so let's keep her in our thoughts. But we wanted to just provide some clarity in our presentation tonight, because oftentimes mentoring and tutoring are used interchangeably, but it's important to define them and provide clarity around what we mean when we say mentoring and how it is different from tutoring. LCS's mission statement of every child by name and by need to graduation and beyond means that we're reaching students where they are and bringing them higher. In considering Maslow's hierarchy of needs, students perform best when all of their needs are met. At the foundational level, we often talk about basic or physiological needs such as food, water, safety, and health. Psychological needs, like the needs for love and belonging and a sense of connection and self-worth, must also be met in order to reach their full potential or self-actualization. Mentoring is a tool that is used to address the psychological needs. It is the act or process of helping and guiding our students to support their personal development. A mentor is one who guides, supports, and advises. A mentor is not a counselor, a certified coach, or therapist. And I'll pause so that there is no confusion. We're talking here about certified life coaches, excuse me, and not athletic coaches. All of us can identify athletic coaches who have been and continue to be instrumental in serving as mentors to our students. Tutoring takes on a different role in that it is the process of providing academic support, and Mr. Sam Coleman and his team in curriculum and instruction oversee this process. To meet the social and emotional or mental health, excuse me, needs of our students, Dr. Derek Brown and the team in Student Services work with a variety of businesses and organizations with specialties to address specific needs. Our target areas for mentoring include academic development, which focuses on things like goal-setting, organizational skills, time management. Social engagement and personal growth include topics such as conflict, conflict resolution skills, peer and adult interactions, self-esteem building. Learning about civic engagement encompasses leadership skills, life skills, self-esteem building, and community service. These target areas help address the ever-changing needs of our students. So then how can mentoring be accessed? School-based mentoring is something that typically happens organically. When a teacher, counselor, or administrator becomes aware of students' needs, they work collaboratively in their buildings to find supports. This may look like pointing a student towards an activity club and/or sport. Our teachers work diligently to build relationships with students, and by doing this, build mentor-like relationships. Also, we find value in sharing information about community organizations and collaborating with them to support our students. We're very excited to list just a few of those with whom we collaborate. They are partners like Jubilee, the Jubilee Family Development Center, Beacon of Hope, our Boys and Girls Club, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and so many others. You'll see links there that can be viewed later. There are videos that we've captured that we will be sharing with principals and our student body, our families, that talk about the programs and the importance of knowing what they actually bring and provide for our students. We also welcome other opportunities for our community stakeholders. So if there's a business or organization, of course, that are reviewing this board meeting or know of, or hear about this later, we encourage community organizations to, to develop partnerships with us so that we can provide some supports, further supports for our students. Crystal Grant has been working with principals at the middle school level to determine needs and help build sustainable and structured opportunities for mentorship in the buildings. She's been working at Lincoln Middle School with Dr. Dills, and I'll ask her to talk about some of their successes. Dr. Dills?
Thank you for allowing me to come and talk about this because it is so exciting, coming off of a COVID year that I saw many of you for negative things. This year has been such a difference. I have to laugh because it's a shame that KG's not here in the fact that she is Dunbar, and we played Dunbar last night, and it, it talks to this specific role that she has because we were competing against her, and my basketball girls came to hug her because she has established a role and a presence there. We were lucky enough that we had several kids that we thought needed just assistance, and not just me giving them a hug or giving them a high five or screaming, "Go Jaguars." We needed students to be able to come into school and relate to individuals that were in the building. To be able to do that is to actually get them to also engage in their academics, because if they come in and they're feeling, as they say, some kind of way, they're not able to get beyond those feelings to be able to engage in the learning loss that they, they had because we're asking them to raise the bar. We're saying, get here, do what you need to do. These kids can be, were actually referred by teachers. They had parents that came in actually in tears saying, how can you help us? How can you help our families? How can you help my son or daughter? Again, this is not kids that are just coming in to play basketball. We have individuals that come in once or twice a week, and they actually come and they eat lunch with students. They walk in, they sit beside them in their classes, and kids are like, well, why can't I be with that person? Why can't I be with that person? So not only are we establishing a solid ground and credibility with kids that we are invested in them, but their peers who they have to act, you know, I'm big and bad and I'm all that. No, I want to be you. I want to do that. As a matter of fact, I'm blessed in that January, it's very timely, in January, I'm going to bring, my student that's coming here to speak is a student who really struggled last year, really struggled. But she came to me and asked if she could read something to me, and her and her mentor developed something that she could read about her leadership and what she has gotten from this mentorship, and how she can stop a student and say, hey, don't say that, let's talk about it another way. So that's not only the generalizable skills that had, these kids have actually done, has really truly impacted our campus. Thirty-five kids, we had them, you know, boys and girls in the summer, and out of that thirty-five, thirty-two out of thirty-three are actually, the ripple effect is, is happening because they too are touching lives. We knew there was thirty-five, now we've got seventy-five, now we've got a hundred kids. And the mentors that are coming in are from different organizations. Some of them actually knew these kids outside in a different realm, some brand new. We could not have made the advances this year without this mentorship. And the people who came in who are just now invested, and of course, they're wearing green, not purple like, you know, or blue like Sandusky because we're the best, but the reality of it is, is that we hope that with our program that it is going to, KG has talked to us, Ms. Grant has talked to us about putting it at Dunbar and Sandusky, and the kind of things that we've bumped into, we've learned from, and we hope that this will be at, just blossoming in our other middle schools.
Wow. So.
All right, and then I'll briefly follow with tutoring. So we have, we recently hired an extended learning coordinator. That role was previously called the 21st Century Grant Coordinator, and so essentially the coordinator who leads this work provides oversight and, and funding for during the day or after-school academic enrichment or tutoring. These opportunities are provided to students, usually by the recommendation of a teacher. And so we have these extended learning opportunities offered at most of our schools. What we do know we need to, to do better about is promoting that or advertising that so that parents know that this opportunity exists. And so what we are doing, I don't know if it's live or not yet, but we will locate on our website and opportunity, information for parents to be able to indicate that there's a need for academic enrichment or tutoring. That information will go to Ultra Whit, again, who's our extended learning coordinator, and she'll support that family and that student with the, connecting them with the academic enrichment or tutoring opportunity for which that family's seeking. So we noticed, and just from some good feedback, that that was the missing link, that we have some programming available, but folks don't know about it, or maybe a few folks know about it. And so we'll locate that information on our website and then continue to talk about it and publicize it so that if there are needs that maybe a classroom teacher or counselor may not be able to identify as quickly as a parent might be able to identify, they can reach out, indicate to us that the need exists, and then we connect them with a pretty quick turnaround time with that support.
Outstanding.
So that link will go live, not already live today, we, I think we have to make a few little tweaks, it'll go live tomorrow. That link is also going to send them to a form that they can also request a mentor. Our goal is to really find out the need, tie them as much as possible to our school, but recognize that we have to also use our community resources to help with our students. There was a slide up there that says mentors are needed. The first step in coming, becoming a mentor is filling out that volunteer application. There is a box on the volunteer application that allows them to check mentor. They would get their approval, and then if, we're going to ask that they reach out to Crystal Grant for mentorship opportunities and to help us. It's, she's done a great job of really finding out who's out there. We do, there's a need. We have five schools that have requested mentoring through a process that we use internally, so we want to make sure that we keep that list of mentors open and available so that we can use people to really help our students. We are looking for people who can be consistent, because many of our children already separate from loss, already suffer from loss and separation anxiety and those kinds of things. So we take them through a very short training process to help our mentors better understand the needs of our students, and we're very excited about this. I will add that the, the position that Crystal Grant serves in is a cares-funded position, so that monies for that position will run out in 2024, and I hope that we will begin, we're going to share more information with you. I know that there's some data available about a decrease in absences, student absences at Lincoln that we're very excited about. We know that you need to see the data to understand the importance of how, of, of the impact of this role, and so we want to thank you.
Thank you, guys.
My goodness, what a powerful piece here. Dr. Day, you want to say something?
Yeah, I just, so you said there's this position you're calling extended learning coordinator.
Yes, sir.
And that's the person who's coordinating the mentoring? No?
No.
Help me understand that, what that person's doing.
Sorry, the extended learning coordinator coordinates the after-school and then in some instances during the day tutoring, or we call it academic enrichment.
Okay, so, so that's not the same person that coordinates the mentoring stuff? That's somewhat separate?
It's, it's separate and I think for, for a couple of reasons, but it, one of the reasons also why it's separate is there's budget or resources that we've made available to support after-school and then again, in some instances during the day, enrichment and tutoring. And so this person also coordinates and oversees the funding process and the budgeting for that.
So it sounds like you have a lot of healthy community support on the mentoring side of this, and then I would hope that the community would be supportive on the tutoring side as well. In fact, it might be that some of the same individuals that mentor would be especially effective as a tutor if they've established a relationship with some of the students and have the ability to tutor in particular subjects.
Yeah, you're reading my mind or we're on the same page. We also want to invite, and will invite, community members to volunteer as tutors. The majority of the academic enrichment and tutoring that takes place after-school and during the day are by our teachers, but we had noticed that, that there are community members who are not teachers, who would be very impactful in their work as tutors. So we want to open the, the opportunity for those individuals to support our students in, in that regard as well. And so information about individuals who are interested in becoming tutors, that'll also be available on that, through that link that'll be live on the web, website.
And presumably, they would go through the same preparation process that you described for mentors to help them understand the needs of the, of the students that they would be dealing with.
Exactly. And, and there are a couple of things that are, a couple of ways that math and reading are taught now that might be unique or, or new to folks who are coming in, so we'll make sure to provide them with, with that support so that their tutoring is consistent with what's happening in the country.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Day. Dr. Brennan?
A couple of comments. One is, thank you so much for the, for the mentoring piece, and Dr. Dill, thank you for what you all are doing at Lincoln Middle School. It sounded like it's a big success, and it makes so much sense to have these people who are supportive, who they can relate to. I think that's huge, so thank you all for putting that in place. Switching to the tutoring side a little bit, which is you, you all described as more of it, is academic support. You, you all have said this in the past, I think we all realize that a lot of what happened during the pandemic, because of losing time in the school, we have to make that up in some way over time. And it seems like tutoring is something that people refer to as a, as a way to try to do that, to either select students who need the tutoring or, or the, or the family will identify them. When they also talk about tutoring, talk about high dosage tutoring, which is like two to three days a week, personalized, really zero in with that student on a specific course to really help them. What services does Lynchburg City School have on a professional level to provide tutoring services to students? So let's say we said tutoring is now available and you had a thousand students say, we want to be tutored. Who will those tutors be and what services do we have available to do that? And then as a little footnote, some schools that we've heard about are using, using virtual tutoring programs to try to help make up for that, where you can have two or three days a week and have it more consistent. And I know it's, it's difficult and it's debatable, but is there any role for that? But my real question is, who are our tutors going to be now?
So, so at this time, the tutoring that, that is being provided through the extended learning opportunities are mainly teachers. We know that that limits our capacity because there are, there's a, there's a need. So our extended learning coordinator, Ultra Whit and I, are exploring options. Most of the options that appear to be the most viable are the virtual and online tutoring options, and, and there, and there's a market for it as well. So we, we are approached and, and folks reach out to us often with information about their programs, and we want to make sure that we do our due diligence to vet those options and select one that makes the most sense for, for what we want to do. But we are leaning more towards selecting that virtual tutoring option.
That's great, thank you. Go ahead, Ed.
And one follow-up, which is that, you know, obviously the, the pool is small, and, and trying to attract professionals who can help us with tutoring is, is a, is a challenge. Can we, I know we can use funds for cares funding for some of this. Do we, is it worth considering paying teachers that we have who, who are willing to do tutoring after-school a, a rate for that that's above it since we do have funds to do it and/or recruit people who are professionals who are not in our schools, who may want to come and do it, but use the funds that we have through cares funding to try to address that?
Yes, and that's exactly the work, and, and sorry if I, if I didn't specify that. So that is the work of this extended, these extended learning programs that, that we have available in our schools right now, where teachers are paid additional and. have available in our schools right now where teachers are paid additional and at, at an hourly rate to work with students for that tutoring. We, we know that we want to build capacity around that. We rolled that out this October. And so we're gonna continue to build them. I'm looking back at Dr. Dills because I, she was like, no, not October, September, we need this right away. We just needed to build it. And we're gonna continue to build, build that out. And so, so that we can compensate teachers for their time, but then also recruit individuals who may not be a part, an employee of LCS, but community members and, and professionals who can provide that service. Again, there are some logistics we need to work, work through. And I can talk, you know, offline about why we want to make sure that there's equity in pay. We don't want to pay limit to what we can compensate our teachers for. And then a community organization comes through and they say, I charge a hundred dollars an hour, you know, that we're paying our folks a rate and then somebody else another rate. So these are all the things we want to vet and protect as we consciously enter to agreements with who can provide this service.
And just in closing on my part, I want to, again, thank you all for doing. I think it's a huge project and having a new person in charge is huge. But I think it is a, we're short on time, kind of, in that we're trying to deal with a situation that occurred two years ago. We're halfway through this academic year. I think we need to do whatever we can to support you and to help the teachers to make this happen. Because I think the tutoring piece is just going to be so important to help those, those students who need to help. But thank you so much for the program and for your effort. And I look forward to hearing more about it as it evolves.
Thank you, Mr. Vice. Chair, Dr. Day.
So since I seem to be reading your mind this evening, you've probably already thought of this. But one place you might look for potential tutors is the education programs at higher education institutions here. I know there's a Math Ed program at Liberty. And I can't think of a better thing for a potential school math teacher to do as part of their training is to sit down with a couple middle or high school students who need some extra help and, and get an understanding of what those students are dealing with. So I think it would be a service to students in those programs to have the opportunity to tutor in the public schools. So in, just in case it hadn't crossed your mind, that might be a good place to check for people that could help with this.
Got it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Day. And I know that, that each of the board members probably have things they would like to say. Looking you all both in the eye and thanking you, Dr. Dill, for your great work. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I, I mean, we have no idea what you have to go through to do all of this. And we ask the public, please be patient with us. I know that some of you are out there doing work, but you haven't formalized the partnership yet. So it's not that we don't recognize what you're doing. It's just that we need to get that process going. But this mentoring and tutoring piece is, is just incredible. Thank you, Dr. Edwards, for the leadership that you're providing. So let's give them a hand and we thank you all for what you did. Thank you very much. We'll now move to C3, which is our 2023-24 Budget Discussion. All right, Dr. Edwards.
Right. So we are kicking off the budget discussion with the school board. Remember, this discussion already got started when our kids told us what was important to them as we've had our student reps come and speak with us. We've heard from members of the public also tonight as to what their priorities are. And what we want to do now is start establishing what are the board's priorities in terms of going forward with the budget. This is the second year of the buy-in. And so our, our resources are a little different in terms of revenue, which we will go over tonight. So to frame the discussion and really get us started, you have a folder, a Manila folder, with information. I don't think anything in there is brand new to you, but we've put it all together. I also have it scanned electronically so that we can also share this information with the public. But what I want to do is just take first a moment to go through what you have, because some of you were on the board last year where this may have been generated and some were not. And just the understanding of what you have and how we're gonna use that information to go forward. So we'll, we'll go through the documents. We'll take some time talking about where we are with the existing budget. We'll take some time to review what were our budget priorities last year. What are some things that we, when we finalized our budget last year, where we landed? And we'll also talk about what is our current projected revenue, if all things stay the same, from the state, using our Calc tool. So you'll have that. And then we have a proposal to you that is around the biggest part of our budget, which is our staff, that we want to start, because usually we start with the pay tables and all of that stuff going forward. And then, of course, it's open discussion, very informal. And really, by the end of the night, what we hope to have is a good sense of what the board's priorities are, taking in consideration what you heard from the public and what we've been hearing over the past couple of months. So let me first take you through what do you have in your, in your handout, in your folder. The first one is the demographic study. It says April 2022, nice red and blue diagram. This is the one that was part of our demographic study when we did our facility study. So this is Proper GIS. It is a predict, prediction, a projection, sorry, of our enrollment over the next 10 years plus, actually out to 2031, '32 school year. And that information is helpful as you're doing both short-term planning, which is planning for next year, but also long-term planning going forward. And remember, this is the one that was done by Proper GIS in April 2022. I also gave you document number two, which is a 10-year school enrollment projection, which is a blue and white document, which was also presented to the school board in 2020. This is the Weldon Cooper Study, which was part of the original Task Force Facility Study. So this also had demographics and projections in it. And we had a nice discussion with the architect regarding Dominion Seven, I'm sorry, regarding the two projections. But one of the things as school board members you want is to look at what are the trends and projections for enrollment going forward. So those are the two documents that we have for you there. The next two documents both start with Lynchburg City Schools, and they are our current enrollment. One has a dot on it.
You're not dot.
Yeah, I know you're not dot. They look identical, which is why I put a, a dot on one of them. It does, yeah, blue, red, green, whatever, whatever was a free dot today. So I'm an equal opportunity batter. The one that does not have the dot is our current enrollment generated on 12/6, but it is enrollment for up until 11/30 or November 30. It does not include Hutcherson. So you can see the enrollment in all the various schools. You can see the preschool enrollment in R.S. Payne and in Perrymont. But this does not, when you look at the ADM on the first page, which is 7814, does not include Hutcherson students. The one with the dot, which looks very similar, does. So you can see there's 8,000, our ADM including our Hutcherson students and all of our pre-K students is about 8,000. So sometimes we always have the question of how many children are you serving? I count all the babies that are here to learn. So I will typically give you the information that includes Hutcherson. But when we do financing and start looking at budget and ADM, they don't include Hutcherson, just so that the board is aware of the different uses. So this is current enrollment for each and every school. So you do have that available too.
Sure.
So students who are at Fort Hill, they're reported under the heading of their home schools?
Mm-hmm. ADA, average daily attendance.
The reimbursements are based on ADA or AD?
ADM.
ADM, yeah.
ADM, right. All right. The next document that you have is one that you actually just received, but we brought it back because it's gonna be relevant. It is a budget document for where are we right now with our current budget, the October, as of October 31st. This is the one that Ms. Capazzi went over just recently, but it identifies the major categories. It tells you where we are in our spending. It gives you an idea of how we're using resources right now. And we can speak to some of the things in this document. So you do have that. And this is also on Board Docs. Okay. The next thing that you need that's important is our per pupil expenditures for the operating budget, which is a document that I did for our graph on it. This is also available on our website. And there's a couple pages to this. But again, you'll see the ADM for 2023, which is proposed. You'll see 2022 and also 2021. And you can see the ADM and you can see our per pupil expenditures based on that. Behind that, again, is some historical document or regarding per pupil expenditures dating back to FY 213, 2013, sorry. And again, you can see ADM and what the per pupil expenditure was for the actual up until 2020. And then you have budget 2021 and budget 2022. And then the final page in that section, still looking at per pupil expenditures. This was information that was shared with city council on October 12th. It was one of the questions that they asked us regarding our 2021 per pupil expenditure versus the state of Virginia and other local areas. So again, this is information that you had, but I wanted to put it all back together so that you have this in a common resource here. Okay. And we will go back to these in individual, but I do want to just take a moment to explain them. The next document is our Lynchburg City Schools operating budget FY 2019 to 2022. And it looks like this has a nice yellow highlight on it. And this was one of the things that you requested to look at previous year's budget, operating budget spending, and then a breakdown of our local tax revenues and some county information, which you can see, we have Bedford County and Campbell County. And Dr. Waterka is also gonna go over this in a little bit more detail for you. It's a lot, but it, it's all helpful information. The next one is our, our pupil teacher ratios as of 10/13/2022. And this is class size ratios in the elementary schools. And then, of course, in the high schools, middle schools are a little different in that we just have the pupil teacher ratios. But you can see what is, I will say, average class size. There are some classes, particularly in the high school that are, in middle schools that are more than that ratio. But that is a ratio of staff to students, just so you have an idea. Because one of the things that we talk about when we're talking about behavior is class size. So if you look at Lincoln Elementary Second Grade, it's 21 students. Bedford Hills, 24 students. So when teachers are speaking, they like a smaller class size, you have a reference for what those class sizes are. The next document is actually from Board Docs of June 7, 2022. So it looks like this. It's a Board Doc document. And it is information that when you voted to finalize last year's budget, after city council voted, we came back and voted, what was actually included in the operating budget? And this is really gonna be important for you to know, the things that we actually included. And you can see that we had a minimum of 5% increase. The average teacher salary increase was 6.45. Classified staff was 7.27. And you can see all that. We did increase funds for dual enrollment, early college, STEM tuition. We added the six additional spots for juniors at the Gov. School. So these are all of the things that you voted for in last year's operating budget. It continues on the backside as well. Now, caution, 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 and you heard this tonight. There are other things that are in the budget that we've had discussions. Can we use CARES funds for those? Can we use CARES funds for those? And the answer has been yes and yes for most of them. But we are coming to a point where CARES funds are gonna run out. So all of those things that were good ideas that we put in CARES funding, and you heard some of them tonight, we need to be considering those too as we move forward and develop next year and the year after, and the year after that budget. Because we are, we do have staff that are funded by CARES. Our entire virtual academy staff is funded by CARES and some other positions. So I just wanted you to see what's actually in operating versus what we have in CARES. And then from the revenue side, this is, you'll hear us refer to the Calc tool, which is the VDOE calculator that sort of outlines all of our revenue sources. And this is what the Calc tool looks like. We get our revenue on a two-year cycle. So you can see this current year's revenue. You can also see next year's revenue. And what I will point out to you is the compensation supplement, which only pays for the SOQ-funded positions, which is about 55, 56% of our positions. So not all of the positions the school board has made up for the rest of that supplement. So again, these are all the major categories for our state revenue. All right, almost done. The next document is a 2021-22 breakdown of budget revenues and expenditures. And this was something that was requested. How did we do last year in our last year budget? What did we say? What did we budget? What did we actually spend? And it's broken down by our revenue. And then on the next couple pages, you'll also see expenditures by major categories so that you have an idea of what percentage of the budget did we actually spend in those categories. And then I think one of the last documents you have is actually a reboot from our PowerPoint from last year with this year's numbers on it. So this is a snapshot of our current staff. It also includes staff that are grant-funded and in CARES funds as well. So we tried to break it down by how many school-based employees, and then transportation, school nutrition, and then the various departments as well. And then the last thing I stuck in there was something from VAS regarding the support cap. You've heard a lot of conversation about trying to get rid of that support cap so that we can, so that schools can really hire the support staff that they need. It will affect that SOQ funding and our basic funding formula as well. So, said a lot, just so that you have a lot. And in no way do expect you to become an expert in all of this tonight. However, these are resources that you need as we begin our budget procedure, which is gonna be over the next several months, to make some good decisions about, about it. You can.
Yeah. I'm looking at our finance chair and previous finance chairs. I've been on this board now. This will be my ninth time looking at this. I, I don't know how I was making decisions years ago without all of this powerful information that you had presented. It just didn't fall out of the sky somewhere. So I hope that our board members can appreciate all of this comprehensive information to help us to make the best decisions possible. So I commend you, Madam Superintendent. You may continue. Dr. Day, you want to say something?
Well, if you were gonna continue, I don't want to interrupt.
If you have a question?
Well, I was, so you mentioned a minute or two ago about the fact that the CARES funding is going to end shortly. Have we seen, in which case, if we have, maybe you need to just remind me, a, a listing in some form of precisely what things are supported by CARES funding? Have, have we seen a document or any kind of thing like that?
We've had an updated of CARES, because not all people are in CARES. There are other things. So, and we haven't done it. We didn't do it this last, because this last month, because nothing changed in our CARES revenue. But we can certainly give you the exact information for position-wise, because that's gonna be important as we.
Yeah, we need, we need to know where we're gonna put those things.
And we do. And, and that was a topic of conversation two years ago when we started this procedure of CARES is nice and they gave us a lot of money, but it's risky business when you use it for people. But kids need people to help, you know, with some of these challenges.
Dr. Gupta?
My memory serves me well, two years ago, it was $3.2 million. We committed two positions, which I voted no. And same argument that three years from now, what will we do? And my fear is going forward, you got 800,000 in Virtual Academy, almost 800 plus minus, and 3.2 million, $4 million of cash will dry up. And you got a backfill where the revenues are flat. are flat, because the enrollment is projected to be flat. You see what I'm saying? So we can go into the nitty-gritty nuts and bolts of $10 here and $20 there, but that's the biggest tsunami sitting. And then two years ago, in school board, we went position by position, and I don't want to say I told you so, but I feel like saying that.
But you told us.
Yeah. You know, and this will be the biggest tsunami facing us going forward now, once that money dries up. Where will that $4 million come from?
And also, just as a reminder, two years ago, our funding was cut from level funding from City Council. So we experienced a little bit of a decrease, about $2.1 million, going into that, that year. We also were very committed as a division when COVID first hit, that we did not want to lay staff off. And even during the time that our schools were closed, we were committed to trying to keep our staff as whole as possible, including folks like bus drivers who, you know, you could, you could teach from home and you can do some virtual learning from home, but not all of our positions you could do remotely. And we really, this board showed ultimate care for staff with that. But you are absolutely right. You did vote no, and we had taught, had lots of conversations about this going forward.
See, I understand we were short, but the thing is, when I was going through college, the easiest thing for me too was charge on my credit card, because I was told you pay only $10 for every $1,000 you borrow. And dummy, they didn't realize that I have to pay back that money someday. And that's what I think I'm worried about, that how will be, I was told at that time, you can fire these people, do these things, but if my kid is having a behavioral therapist treating my kid, last thing I want is the therapist to go away.
Of course.
That's a value-added baked into the system. So for this board, it's, the issue is, what are we going to do a year from now? You see what I'm saying? That's the money we'll need it, and that based on the enrollment projections you just presented, they are flat, and your revenues are based on those ADMs.
Well, I think that, very good, Dr. Gupta, I think that that just speaks to the fact, all of this good information we have, that this board is going to have to do what we do best, and that is be at our best to think through these matters and to work very effectively with appropriating bodies to make sure that the dollars that we need ongoing are available to do what we believe is best for our children. Dr. Day?
And then the very uncomfortable side of that is we have to look, are there places where we're spending money that's lower priority than some of the things that we've identified here? And that's always a horrible decision to have to make, because I don't think there's anything we're doing that we don't think is meaningful or valuable. But if there's a fixed number of dollars to add one thing, you have to let go of something else. And so unfortunately, I think we have to be looking for where.
And we have issues.
Yeah, that's going to be painful.
Well, well said, Dr. Day, but I take confidence that the finance chair wants to talk. We've got a good piece here to work through this, I believe. Dr. Sena?
I agree with all of this, and I think this is really important to show accountability and effectiveness in how we've spent the dollars. And also to recognize, I think at the time, we knew we'd have a period of recovery, that there'd be learning loss, and that we'd have this increase in need for services, but it would be short-lived, and the CARES money would get us over the hump. Well, I think, not just us, but Nash, statewide, Nash, we're realizing the scope of the problem is far greater than we, than we expected, and it's compounded by festering mental health issues that I don't think were fully anticipated at the time. So that's where it becomes important to have good documentation on what has been the scope of the issues that we're confronting. You know, like discipline, we were really doing well on discipline, but I'll tell you, when we're having multiple discipline hearings, sessions for, you know, outcomes of anxiety, stress, acting out, that just are really have peaked, I think we're gonna, we're really going to hit a crunch, because I think the recovery period is going to be longer than anybody expected, and it's a far greater hill to climb. So it's very important that we show effectiveness in what we have done so far with the CARES money that we have done, the impact of behavioral coaches, the impact of the mentoring and other things that we've done, and how that's helped the, some of the recovery programs that we've had over the summer, that we've demonstrated, our investment in assessment testing, to really use that to make our case, to say, yes, we've had this infusion of funds, and we're really making some headway here, but we have to have the data to, one, demonstrate the size of the problem, and two, the impact with which our interventions and the actions that we're taking are effectively spending those dollars, because I can foresee us reaching a point where we can't sunset some of these problems, because they were bigger and longer lasting than anybody could have predicted at the time. That's just my big fear and concern.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Sena. And Dr. Gupta did go before council to alert us of the problems some time ago. And so I think that if everybody just takes a deep breath, let's, let our experts here kind of guide us through some of this mountain of material that we have here. And let the process begin, and let's put our best work into this. Dr. Gupta, you want to say one additional statement?
Dr. Edwards, are you going with that 1550?
I'm getting there, sir.
Oh, you're getting, I'm sorry.
Certainly, I'm certainly getting there.
Let's, 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 let's let it go. And of course, you all, we could be on this through Christmas Day, right? So we, you all, please be mindful of our capacity, and just give us what you want to give us now, and then we'll figure out what we can do.
Absolutely. So that's, remember, we're at big picture, right, right now. So to frame the big picture, we went back in time to see what we did. We have resources to see where we are, where we're going in terms of projection. We've also had lots of conversation. We have the J-Lock study that talks a lot about what our, our students are experiencing, our families are experiencing. I think I shared that with everybody. Everybody should have that copy. And we also know that, you know, we are in the midst of a teacher shortage. Enrollment in teacher prep programs is down. We knew the baby boomers were going to leave us. That was always a prediction, but we, they took a few others with them as the pandemic. So we're seeing more people leave the teaching profession than are entering, which means competition for staff is going to be really important. We've talked a lot about our wage gap between us and other areas, and how, you know, if they do a 5%, we do a 5%, we're just preserving the gap if everybody's going up the same, which is why, very grateful for the work that she did last year, because we did a little bit more than five for, for many of our employees. But we're still not there. So we do have an aggressive proposal that we would like to share with you all in context with. We've got to look through all of our numbers and see where we're going with that. So I'm going to kind of go over, there's pretty much four little pieces to this big proposal that we want to share. The first is, I've already mentioned, that we know based on last year's compensation five and five. So we, minimum of 5% is part of what's in this compensation supplement for the next year, just for SOQ. We've got to come up with the rest of it, but that's a minimum of 5% that we know we have to do. The other thing, that's number one. Number two of what we did, last year, we collapsed the pay tables for the classified staff. I think we had like 24-plus pay tables, and we, we collapsed them. Our promise to you last year was that we were going to look at the admin tables now and collapse those and look at some of the inequities between what we see in the admin tables. So that is another priority that we want to move forward and look at, how can we collapse those admin tables into fewer while also being mindful of at least the 5%? The third thing in our proposal that's going to be really good, and right now, I'm just limiting it to the staffing, because that's the big chunk, 85% of our budget, is the way that our pay tables are set up, which made sense at the time that we did them, since we were getting funded basically every two years. We had a, for most of the staff, not the teaching staff, but for the classified and admin staff, we were on every other year. And when funding happened, they got a raise. And then it was a freeze, and then a raise, and then a freeze, and then a raise, and then a freeze and a raise. And the teachers, we split that, them in half. So half were on odd year, freeze, raise, freeze. The other were on even year, freeze, raise, freeze. And it made sense, because we could at least guarantee that we were getting that biennial funding every two years. However, in competition with other areas, on that freeze year, it doesn't feel so good for staff, right, to not just, I'm going to stay at this pay level that I'm on. And what we're seeing is other divisions nearby don't have that. So even the slightest of an increase is enticing, and we don't want to lose our folks. So the third part of what we're trying to do is, is get rid of the every other and get it back to where a staff member can see a projection of every year of some sort of increase built into those pay tables. And then lastly, the big thing that we feel strongly about, and we know that we are facing some challenges in trying to make this work. But we, the administration, we've talked long and hard, especially this year, after seeing the work that our staff are doing, and particularly just looking at, as you all said, some of the discipline and just mental health, and trying to provide all of those extra resources for enrichment and advancement. We want to propose what we're calling the 1550 plan. So $15 an hour would be our minimum for our lowest classified staff, paid classified staff, which would be Schedule A. Right now, that entry level hourly rate is $13.11, which is up considerably of where we started five years ago. We were creeping up. But we want to make a bigger jump to make that minimum $15 an hour for that schedule, which would ripple through the, the other schedules as well. So that's part of it. The second part of that is 50. Our starting teacher salary, I don't want to mess this up, so let me give you the number, for the current year is $43,469, is about 81 cents. Let me not forget that. That's our starting teacher salary. It's not enough. It's not enough for our teachers, especially those who have families. And we need to raise that. We need to raise that to be more competitive. We need to raise that to keep teachers in the teaching field. Many of our educators have master's degrees. When you think about a master's degree and other professions that have it, we need to make that higher. So we are proposing that we raise the starting entry level teacher salaries, for 10 months teachers, to $50,000 at minimum. So that is our 1550 proposal. We recognize it's aggressive, but each and every one of us, as we sat here, we thought we have to go hard and advocate for our staff. We may lose, but we have to go hard and advocate for a staff who has gone above and beyond for the children of Lynchburg City Schools.
Dr. Gupta?
So, the teachers, if I'm a veteran teacher, taught here for 15 years, and I'm not 50,000, so that...
It's going to ripple all those, I'm talking, the entry level would be 50, and just like we did the, the other pay tables, we will adjust down and adjust across.
So have you done a cost estimate of how much will it, additional money will it cost?
Yeah, we wanted to toss, we, we've played a little bit, but we wanted to toss that out to this school board, because if you all said, "Don't do it," it saved us a lot of time.
Because I wanted to, and I brought it up in the finance thing, was, we know we always do a catch-up game, and we have been struggling with our school bus drivers, especially, because they go to Campbell County, they go to Bedford County, because they're offering $15, $16 when you work at McDonald's. We are not only competing with other districts, we are competing with private businesses for labor force right now. And I just, I'm just curious, could we be two steps ahead of that? All this market, using Dr. Coleman's word, dynamics, to see if we can make it 1850, maybe 1750, I don't know, some sort of an alternate number, where we know for a year or two, we'll not be doing a catch-up game? And how much will be the cost projection? And could we utilize the current resources we have, what Dr. Day was talking about, to make it a reality?
All right. This is going to be an interesting budget cycle here, but...
Listen, we've been talking about this for a good number of years. You know, we're going to put our money where our mouth is on this. I think the superintendent is wanting to at least understand that 1550, 1850, 1750. What are your thoughts, members of the board, on this issue? Having no cost estimate of what this is going to look like, obviously, as Dr. Day said earlier, some things are going to have to be moved from one place to the other. But the teacher shortage is real in America, and it is very real in Virginia. Dr. Day?
I'm totally supportive. I think the teachers are the most important component of what we're here to do. If we can't make teaching for Lynchburg City Schools more attractive than teaching for our neighboring districts, we're just, we're fighting a losing battle. And as I was saying a few minutes ago, it may be quite painful to move money around to do this, but I think we have to support the teachers. If we can't do that, we've lost the game, I think.
All right. And Dr. Gupta, I want to come, anybody else would like to speak? Dr. Gupta, go right ahead.
And I agree with you, teachers are important, but in that, boy, sometimes you forget about all other support staff. So I want to say, teachers and staff, they're all important. So if you are a custodian in LCS, you are a groundkeeping crew, if you're a bus driver, you know, you're all important piece of that puzzle of providing a quality education to our, Dr. Edwards says, our kiddos. I don't want to plagiarize your word, but that's, you know, and that's, it requires a whole team to do that.
All right. So, of course, we can come back to this, but Dr. Brennan, anybody else you all have? Mr. Preston, do you all have anything you want to say on this? I mean, Mr. Andrews?
I mean, I like it. We do need to be able to be competitive, and I do want to retain and recruit more staff, obviously, not just teachers, but support staff. And $18, you know, that, that brings them to the table. That brings them, I think, gets them interested in LCS. The thing that we also have to keep in mind, though, is that the $4 million gap that we were talking about a few minutes ago with CARES money. And we need to think about compression moving forward, right? The ripple effect. And so as we start building out the 1850, there are a lot of things that we have to take in consideration. And how does it affect us, the division moving forward, right? Because we got to be able to see beyond this fiscal year, we got to be able to see five years from now. And so I'm, I like it, we just need to be able to, we got to work it, though. We got to work it. And so it's, it's easy to say, yeah, let's do 1850, sign the check, right? But we got to make sure that it, it, it works on paper, and that there's not going to be huge retribution after the fact. So yes, it gets people in the door, yes, it recruits people, yes, it retains people, and that's extremely important for us. You want to make sure it doesn't come back and bite us, though. So we just got to be smart.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. And sustainability has always been an issue for this board. But if we're going to tackle this issue, we're going to have to lessen our fear on that and figure out how we do this, because we have to sustain it if we're going to promise something, and we are unable to do it a year or two in, and that becomes horrible. Dr. Brennan?
I'd just like to say, as far as the, the budget for this coming year, I think, as we're all saying, that the, the teachers and the support staff are our number-one priority. And I think that, you know, we all know how hard they're working, we all know the stress they're under, we all know how it's been for the last two years, we know, all know how small the pool is to get good staff. So I think that has to be our number-one priority, and to do raises to make it more competitive is very important. We've just been given a lot of stuff to go through tonight as far as a lot of information, and one of them I know has my name at the bottom, which is this operating budget final reviews and expenditures. Just glancing at it, I have a feeling that the, the, the feeling from, from finance is going to be that we don't have much room to cut, that it looks like our expense, our revenue and our expenditures were pretty close as far as what we had predicted and our actual thing. So I'm going to put out there that we're probably... So I'm going to put out there that we're probably not going to be able to cut things, which I think that needs to be part of the conversation. Is there some way? Because I have a feeling that when we receive the numbers that talk about the fifteen dollars and fifty, and, and fifty thousand dollars, that number is going to be very high. And I, and I would like to see that number. And I think I can't make a decision whether I'm going to support that without seeing the number to start with. But I think it's going to be tough because I, as, I think, as Mr. Anthony has said, we want, so we're the teachers and the staff. We're going to support these staff. That's our number one priority. And the question is, how much can we do? Particularly if there's not any place else that we can get funds from because the CARES money is not there anymore. It won't be there in two years unless somebody finds somebody who's really generous to Lynchburg City Schools, where we have what we get from the state and locally and federally. And we're going to have to look at those numbers to see. So I, I'm all in favor of it. I think it's very important, but I can't make a decision about the fifteen fifty without knowing what that cost would be.
Yeah, don't, don't get me wrong. I mean, I, I like it, it's a great idea. I just want to be able to continue to give our staff raises also consistently, sustain it, and then still operate within our means, right? So...
Dr. Gupta?
No, I agree with you. But the thing is, then, in, in budget cycle, to me, the board's job is to look at strategically, and I've said that several times, even in the finance committee. So one-year budget is the staff thing, but the board is looking at next five years, where are we going? Because I see positive variances in our budget. Positive variance means there's a savings, anywhere from half a million to one fifty to one sixty-five. So if you add all those positive variances, there's a cash available. Where do you use that cash? But I had a question for you, Dr. Edwards. My number, total number of LCS employees add up to one thousand six hundred forty-one. How many of them are SOQ?
It's a good question.
The last time I heard in the budget cycle was about five fifty. Is that the round?
Well, it's more than that.
In the sevens, I do believe.
That's a seven hundred. So seven hundred is five percent increase is funded by the governor or the state. Rest six hundred, rest about nine hundred are left up to LCS to fund for zero to five percent means. But if I am non-SOQ, I like to have the five percent increase. So want people who are listening to hear that, that LCS has to put up the five percent for other nine hundred, which are unfunded mandate, unfunded mandate by this Commonwealth biennial budget. Is that?
Yeah.
Yes, that is correct.
That's why the vast pieces, we want all of it. Yeah. So, Dr. Edwards, at the end of the day, and I'm not suggesting anything. I'm just thinking, it, it could be that our ASK, our ask, would be greater than what we may have been asking for in the past, may.
Well, our ask would most likely be greater than level funding if we're just even trying to do the five percent. And that takes in consideration any sort of swap outs that we do. So we will, like, every position, when it becomes vacant, is not necessarily refilled. It may be swapped to do another need that's more important. It may even be traded from one place to another just because that, there isn't a need to have that there. So we typically go through all of those. We have not taken on, I mean, last year, we, we took on a good, good project with the classified pay table plan, and we really were moving that, that needle up above thirteen dollars an hour. That was our goal, to do that. And then, of course, that with the five percent. But this is, this is a big endeavor, one that we've been talking about for quite some time, that we're just, you know, we're, we're maintaining a gap between us and other divisions. But before we get in and put a lot of time and energy and pay table work and, and what's necessary, we wanted to bring that to the board as a concept. Like, is this something we should be exploring? Because it would be, as Dr. Coleman said, that's a, a big ask for us.
Dr. Sinha, and then Dr.?
So my question kind of gets at what the, Dr. Gupta and you have been talking about. Along with these projections we have, so we have the student side of it, the demand, if you will, but the, I guess, the supply of the teachers and workforce. Do we have comparable data of how, like you said, you shift resources? So how does that look moving forward? And I know that's hard to predict because these are just numbers based on projections, and anything can happen. Although, we know housing capacity is kind of fixed, and all the growth is mostly in non-family housing. And so, you know, there's some stability, I guess you could say, in the numbers. But it may be helpful to envision, like, how those resources might shift. Can we make changes in the number of non-SOQ or prioritize if we're going to eliminate positions to try to work with those first since they don't come with state funding? And how those resources might shift? And then we also, to make it even more complicated, we still have this facility thing coming out. What are we going to do? And how do we? So that's that. And so we know this, we know, and here's another part of it. What is the demographics of our, of our teaching staff in terms of seniority and how that ripple effect looks? So, you know, how many people do we have that are nearing retirement that are going to need to be replaced? Because that replacement comes in much more affordable than what's going out with the seniority. And how might those things shift? To what extent can you anticipate what that's going to look like? So if we're taking a long, long-term view of the enrollment side, we need to have some basis to look at the, where we're going over the next three to five years on the personnel and staffing side. Am I making sense?
You're making perfect sense.
Absolutely.
And I know that's a huge ask.
Some of it is a little easier to kind of manage when you're matching student enrollment and teaching staff in the elementary level. And we've done some of that where we're like, okay, we're going to collapse a class here, which saves an FTE that we may not necessarily need for an elementary position, but maybe that's an extra math position that we need. Or just a savings in general, if that's, if that's that. Or collapse a classroom FTE, but this school over here is growing, so we move that staff member over to that school. It's a little easier. It becomes more challenging at the secondary level because of content certification and just, you know, you, you, if you're overstaffed in English and understaffed in math, that doesn't help you except for the fact that you're overstaffed in English and understaffed in, in math. I don't have good projection numbers from, and I want to do this with our, at least our local. We know who our top colleges and universities are, that, that many of our staff. So we, we do get that data. What is their pipeline enrollment? Like, how many physics teachers are we looking at coming out of our local places? How many elementary teachers? To see what that replacement need is going to look like. I don't have that data from them. I have generic overall data that says it's down across the country, but what it is here. And also, our role in helping them build up their teacher educator pipeline. The other thing that I wanted to say just about SOQ-funded, I think that's more in a funding formula because you, some of our SOQ-funded positions may be in a number. So, for example, they may say, well, you'll get seven of these. Well, if we have twelve, then, and we need twelve, it's kind of hard to say which of the five are we going to, we're going to cut. And then there are some things that aren't SOQ-funded at all, like assistant principals at the elementary level, right? So we end up funding our assistant principals at the elementary level. So some of those priorities, yes, we can look at. And then, of course, we're always looking at the dynamic between, and one of the reasons why I give it to you for school-based versus, you know, non-school-based, is the role of that. The, the role of departments like, like mine and HR and finance and that support. And how many, how many employees do we need to really run a smooth operation? Because if we don't have enough and they're not running smooth, then the staff aren't happy if we're, you know, not providing services for that. We are, we are always looking at that. So to the degree that we're trying to figure out where we can sort of collapse staff and move staff, the wild card for us in, of late is the need for support staff, for mental health, for behavior coaches. And you hit it on, oh, man, did you say that very well. The, what we thought would be a short-term fix, like, we're, we're just going to put this Neosporin and this Band-Aid on and in a year or two, Boo Boo went away. Well, Boo Boo is staying around for a little bit longer than any of us anticipated. So we're still seeing these, we're still seeing threat assessments that we're doing almost daily, and in younger children as well. And that J-Lark study outlines that. So pulling those resources, you know, we, we may have to substitute them somehow there.
And that, those kind of positions would fall under this gap, but not assistant principals.
No.
There you go. They're more professional.
Yeah.
Dr. Gupta?
Three things I wanted to say is, you know, the budget process has always been like, this line is constant, and let's work from there in sort of reallocation or revisiting line-by-line item to see, not line-by-line items, so how many toilet papers, line-by-line item, those categories, to see if there is a reallocation of resources because you provided the student-pupil-to-teach ratio. This is an eye-opener for me at a macro level, not at a micro level because I don't know how many special education students are there, what the behavior challenges are. But looking at three middle schools, you got fourteen point four, ten point six, and fifteen point three. That's a wide variation of almost fifty percent from one middle school to other. The two high schools is twelve point six to sixteen. I will not name which school, but that's a wide variation. So there are things in the system which may be open for discussion to saying what, where can we make those savings to achieve what we want to do? And I'm going to go to my second point, if we allow that. If I'm working a thirteen-dollar-an-hour wage, you give me a five percent increase, and I did calculations, it comes out to be about thirteen hundred sixty-five a year, thirteen sixty-five. When I take home, it comes out to be about, I don't want to shame them, but if I'm making hundred thousand dollars, that five percent is five thousand dollars. So there is a variation when you compare a salaried employee with an hourly employee in terms of how much they take away will be. So what we are doing is we're forcing these people to work two, three jobs to make a living. And that's not compassionate management, in my point. So we got to look for these people to make sure they, they give all they have only to LCS and not divide up their energies everywhere else. And if it requires reallocation, we got to look at where the savings are and what the challenge is, including that four billion dollars. You know, that will require strategic thinking. That will require not just one-year budget, the three, four years extension of where are we and where will be, assuming level funding. I'm just saying, take the worst-case scenario and plan. That's what companies do. Mr. Ross Business will be doing the same thing, right? You, you allocate manpower, you allocate resources based on, the inflationary pressures are hitting the most to the least earners. You know, the hourly wage employees. And I don't want to diminish their contribution by saying that, but it is hurting them. So we got to do something in this budget cycle to make sure that they are taken care of. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Gupta. Dr. Edwards, let's, if the board could just give those who are going to make a presentation, and I'm, I'm not sure exactly what time period that's going to take to do that, but let's, 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 let's hear some of the presentations at this point.
Yeah.
And then we can decide what we want to do from there, members of the board, because I do want to remind you, we've got a few more items on this agenda for tonight.
So what we wanted to do was just take time and have Dr. Wodoka and Ms. Kapasi kind of go over the numbers. And specifically, we had a little bit about last year's budget. And we want to be mindful of your time and not go through everything but the things that you want us to go through. So I'm going to let Dr. Wodoka go. And I think it's the sheet with the yellow highlighter.
Yeah, I just want to talk a little bit about revenues. So we'll do that, and then also the state revenues. As you know, the school division gets most of its money from two sources. That is the Commonwealth of Virginia, their programs, as well as the city government. And so we want to focus just a few minutes on those changes in state funding. So if you go to that, that document that Dr. Edwards mentioned as the, what we call the Calc tool, the one she's holding up there, yes, sir? It is, this is a, this is a document that's produced by the Virginia Department of Education, and it provides what funding sources by type that are provided by the Commonwealth, largely in many lines based on that ADM number that we discussed. So if you look at that, that document, you'll see fiscal year twenty-three, fiscal year twenty-four, obviously, next year, we're talking about fiscal year twenty-four, and the projected ADM at seven thousand three hundred and twenty-one point two students. I think you heard Dr. Edwards say earlier, we're actually above that right now. So those numbers may be different, but these are the numbers that we work with, that we budget on, that we want to pay attention to. In this section, there are four components of, that take into account just different types of revenues. There's these SOQ programs, incentive programs. There are categorical aid programs and lottery-funded. So I'm going to talk about components and sections in three of those, just not the, the categorical funds. Because those are things that are sort of things like adult ed, school lunch, homebound jail programs and things like that, that are not, are sort of our primary mission. On this, on the top component of the SOQ programs, I want to point out that very first line, that basic aid component, that will increase by about a little less than five hundred thousand dollars next year. And then I'm not going to read every line to you, but the next line is state sales tax. And that is projected to actually decrease just to some extent. But that is connected to a line in our incentives program, our incentives lines that are supplemental general fund payments in lieu of food and hygiene tax. So you'll remember, there's been a lot of conversation in the last, you know, couple, year or two, about the grocery tax and all that. And beginning January first of 2023, that will be much different. And so we do get a supplemental general fund payment to make up for lost revenue as a result of that change. Now, I do want to be cautious. I think there's a caution that we should learn from the Personal Property Tax Relief Act from the late nineties, when Governor Gilmore was the governor. Local governments were told, we're going to make this up forever. You know, we're going to take away the car tax, and local governments don't have to worry because we're going to, you know, state government's going to make up this money forever. And that number has not changed since the late nineties for each locality. So I don't, I think we should just be mindful of that and recognize that that, we should not rely on that growing year over year. But that's about a million two more than last year from, from where we are. The third is on the incentives component. The compensation supplement is a little less than two million dollars in addition. That's that five percent from the state that we have been talking about. So that's that component. And the last, there's just a little change that at, at risk, they just move that money around between lottery-funded and incentives program. So all total, the non-categorical aid components, those three big items, we're looking at an increase of about two point seven five million dollars next year over this year. But that's mostly taken up by that five percent increase as, as we go through. So certainly we'll take any questions you might have about the, the calc tool. One other component that is different from this year to next year. So if you look at the very bottom number, it's, you know, you can't take the two because there's a couple of things that are different. There was a school construction grant program entitlement of two point eight million dollars last year that's not funded in fiscal year twenty-four, so we're not counting that in the operating funds for next year. So any questions you might have?
Good information. Any questions?
You said two point something, what was that number?
For the construction?
No, prior to that, the, like, the whole, I guess...
It's a, I think it's aggregation.
That's not on your sheet.
Oh, okay, never mind.
We take out all this up there.
Okay. Any further questions on this particular document? And while you're pondering whether you do or don't, I think the superintendent is also wanting us to know that we've been given all of this information tonight, which is incredible information that we will need over this process. Is there anything in any of these sheets or handouts that you would like further discussion, explanation on tonight?
Just clarification, the two point seven five million dollar number that you talked about, that was an aggregation of a couple of different numbers. But it's kind of a wash, in essence, because that number, it's been given to us by the state, but it's going to be utilized by the five percent pay increase.
Right, so about two million of that is the five percent pay increase.
Okay.
And there's about seven...
Seven fifty, okay. All right, very good, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tross. Dr. Gupta?
Dr. Edwards, these handouts you provided to us has a lot of good information. And you said you have an electronic file. Is it possible to make it public and put it on Word Doc so people can see what I'm seeing in my folder, so that it's transparent? What we are doing is the public information.
We scanned it into a PDF, so we can add it.
The answer is yes. All right. I want to ask one more time. Hopefully, I'm, I'm being understood in what I'm asking. Of these handouts, and thank you, Dr. Gupta, for giving me that word that was escaping me, each of these will be called a handout. Is there any particular handout that you would like further explanation on tonight? I thought I heard the superintendent suggest that she would go over what we wanted to go over rather than all of it. Dr. Brennan?
Dr. Wodoka, the operating budget history that, that looks at different counties, can you just hit the high points of that for us? I'm not familiar with that, different areas, as far as the general property and other local taxes. Is that something we need to be aware of?
Absolutely. This is the document that starts off Lynchburg City Schools' operating budget history. It shows up the history of the last five years, and the counties were four years. So, the question was, this came from a VSB, I think PowerPoint, said, we should take a look at what percentage of your local taxes are provided to the school division, right? And how that compares to others. And so, how that was defined was, wasn't totally defined, but we, what we defined was general property taxes and other local taxes. So, these are, of course, your, your real estate tax, your personal property tax, as well as, you know, all the other, other taxes that might be there. So, it doesn't take into account for the local government, things like utilities, and all the other things that are not necessarily related to the general fund. So, if you look at Lynchburg, in the last five years, we've, we've sort of hovered around twenty-seven, twenty-eight percent of that number, that, the aggregate number between the general property tax and other local taxes. And if you compare that to the local counties, you know, they're pushing fifty percent. That's not a, that's not a wonderful comparison, because the city just does more things than the counties do. And so, we, we can add in some of the other cities around the state to see kind of where we are, but we just kind of wanted to give that local context. And so, you know, the city does things, you know, more public works, and parks and rec, and police and fire, and that sort of thing, that are, that are taken up by that. But, you know, I just wanted to kind of provide a local context for you there, just for that information. So, counties are really pushing closer to fifty percent of their local taxes are going to, to schools, but we've been hovering around a quarter.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brennan. Thank you, Dr. Wodoka. All right. Mr. Tross?
Dr. Edwards, on the pupil-to-teacher ratios sheet, looking at the pupil-teacher ratio from different schools, EC glass and Heritage High School, the pupil-teacher ratios there, is there any way for us to look at, and I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there, are there special education classes or something that may modify, so that we, I don't want that to be a misrepresentation of the class size, you know, my guess is there are certain services at different schools that may drive a number down, so it's, if someone's asking, I guess, for a weighted average or something of that nature, or some explanation as to why one looks so more, more different than the other. Can you just speak on that?
Yeah, there, there are several things that factor into that, and, and special education is one of them. You also have to consider, when you start offering singleton classes or AP classes that are one-offs, at what point, what is the enrollment in that class? So, if I offer, let's just say it's me, AP chemistry, I may have twelve kids that are interested. Is twelve enough? Do we cancel the class? Do we hold the class? Versus across town, it may be twenty-four kids that are interested in that. So, there are some variances in enrollment, and whether or not we're offering different classes that factor into that. The, the middle school and the high school one is very difficult to calculate, because if it's just, here's the pupil enrollment, here is the total teacher. It's so raw, and, but it was at least to give us a frame of reference for what that looks like. But if you actually walk through classes, which, you know, in a previous life, that's what we've done, we've walked into, we've take period four, and we'll walk into classes, and we'll do a class size, and see what's going on in actual classes, because you will see some classes that are definitely over these numbers, as well as some that may be under.
So, and I just wanted the general public to know that those numbers, if they see these reports, maybe there's some outlier classes that may skew the number one way or the other, and just want to make sure we're all aware that there are outlier classes, and that's not necessarily indicative of the majority of the classes in any particular school.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Tross. All right.
Then, Dr. Edwards and team, I think that, I know at least for this board member, I'm gonna take all of these handouts and look through them very, very carefully, and of course, questions can be raised, you know, by submitting them to Dr. Edwards and the team, et cetera. And then, obviously, we're going to be revisiting this quite frequently as the months unfold, correct?
Correct. So, our next steps, if we, we wanted to propose our very aggressive fifteen fifty, we've heard seventeen fifty and eighteen fifty as other alternatives, is to go back and do some work on that now, so that we can actually do some projections of what we think that would cost us if we did a fifteen fifty, or, or seventeen or eighteen fifty. And then, between our regular, and we did this last year, between the regular meeting, the work session meeting, and now we have the finance committee meeting as needed, to kind of vet through some of this information, as well as, we'll start, we'll finish up with the school and division department budgets, to talk about any other additional things, because this is, doesn't include any additional things. And in the past, remember, like, we've added slots, or we've added classrooms, we heard universal pre-K. So, all of that balance is gonna have to come to the table in terms of what we're gonna do, and where we're gonna move forward with that.
Dr. Brennan?
As part of that information, as you look at that, and as I sort of suggested, and I may well be wrong, that there's not much room to look at previous budgets, to see if there's money that we should, that we should, that we, there's funds that we can use for this coming budget, that there's things that we can cut, or we did not use. Can we also have a report on that to say, okay, here's what our proposal would be for this amount, to do fifteen fifty, and here are areas we found that we can actually find some of those funds to help support that in our current budget, without having to go to ask for additional funds?
And that's a good point, Dr. Brennan, and I just want to go back in history, and particularly for new board members. At one point, when we were first looking at transportation, and we did do a proposal where we had so many vacant positions for transportation, for bus drivers, and we were like, we're just not going to get that many. So, we collapsed the number of positions. We took the extra money, we added eight-hour, eight-hour bus driver positions, and we also increased salaries. So, that's one way to look at, where did, where did you get the funds to sort of raise the bar a little bit in the transportation department? We actually looked at transportation funds and moved some things around, so that we could do that. We also off, with, you know, offering that, we offered more investment in VRS for our staff, which some of our local divisions don't also have parts of that. So, we continue to do things like that. The other thing that we did not include in here, but we know it's a problem, because we talk about it every month, is health insurance. And where we, you know, we typically use the, okay, here's some extra money and benefits to cover the health insurance overage, but if we start collapsing and sort of taking away positions, we're also moving that funds too. So, it's a delicate balancing game, as we look at everything that we can do for this.
All right. Now, it's clear, board, that the administration has put, at least it looks to me, a lot of hours in putting all of this together to give to us tonight. And I have full confidence, Dr. Sinha, in the finance committee's intentionality of looking at this stuff regularly, and the full board being abreast of everything that the finance committee has, and us really working hard together on this. One of the things I don't want us to do is to knee-jerk the administration around on rabbit trails, that we don't have any intention of committing ourselves to. That, it becomes very frustrating, along with all of the other work that administration has. So, let us, as I know we will do, be very clear on what we're asking, and try not to keep going in fifty different directions as this process unfolds. Dr. Gupta?
I just wanted to thank, you know, two silent staff members sitting there, you've done a remarkable job.
Right.
Catching up. You just joined LCS, but the information you have provided very detailed.
Yes, indeed.
And I, I, for one, can tell you, I'm not gonna take you a rabbit hole of an eight percent increase in the middle of the night.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta. All right, well. Please.
Are we making the assumption that the city will not, cannot appropriate additional funds to help cover some of the costs? Because these are things that impact our entire city, not just the educational system. They impact the entire city.
Preston, we can probably come back to you at some point to make that statement again, because you seem like you know exactly how to make it. Yes, ma'am. The answer is yes. So, anyway, Dr. Carter, did you want to say?
I just hope this year that we make a commitment to what we want to do.
Yeah.
And not change.
Yeah.
Make a commitment. If we want to do, see if salaries really are what we want to do, then let's give that direction, but not change.
Yeah.
It's just too much, it's too time-consuming. I really want to respect the time and the energy and effort that everyone is putting into this.
Thank you, Dr. Carter. Dr. Gupta?
I was privately acknowledging her. Last year, if you remember, she was proposing fifteen, and we were on that trail for three percent, five percent.
Yeah.
So, we back to where it was proposed last year.
And, you know, so, I like the fifteen, I like the eighteen. Let's just see what, what's gonna happen, but let's move forward. All right, let's go into D, and we have three items here under section D, school board policy discussion. And the first is, this is for a simple discussion on curriculum and instruction policy updates. Dr. Edwards, we could quickly move us through that.
Mrs. Pugh could not be here tonight. She had an emergency, but she left me all of her notes, so I will try my best to kind of go through the CNI policies as she noted. And these are all just for first read and discussion, no action tonight. So, the first one in her list is IKEB, which is, on her note, she's saying that there is no, no change, just requests the format from the middle school program of studies. And that's all. So, she didn't recommend any change in that. The next one is IKF, and if I'm going too fast, then you guys just stop me.
You're doing very nicely.
Okay. And her notes on this one, let me just make sure that I get it. On the back, there is some language that is crossed out on the back of, or on page two, I should say, and she's suggesting that we keep that language on, on the back with regard to.
Four and five.
Yep, four and five.
Her suggestion is to not do the deletions.
Right. It says keep on her notes on the back of this.
So, why is it crossed out? Is that what?
That probably would have been what VSB recommended.
Got it.
And then, she also wrote a note about a passing score, and for number one, probably to include the, the VAP fourth grade testing and an ELL test, because number one just talks about the end-of-course SOL test here.
Can, can we just make, this is our first reading, so we'll be back at this in the future. Hopefully, she will be here to help us understand.
Oh, yes.
The reason she wants to keep that.
Yes, she will.
So, okay.
You can make any notes, and, and even if you have a question in between, just email her.
Not over the break.
Yes, I told my staff to rest over the break. All right. IKFA, which is locally awarded verified credits, there are no changes, this is just up for a three-year review. And you guys are still with me? All righty. The next one is LEAZ, which is student-teachers slash interns, and there are some, the green language is some inserts, some additional language for number ten, under the first section, is about the background checks for our student-teachers and TB screening. And then, she added some additional language, because we do have practicums and field experience, which aren't student-teachers, but pre-service teach, pre-service classes where they come in and work. So, you'll see that there is some language in there with regard to those pre-service teachers. And I think, and to include TB screenings as well for them.
Okay.
Okay. Doing well there. All right. The next one is, this, I think this is the big one, yes? This is the IIA instructional materials, which is related to Senate Bill six fifty-six. And the language in here is with regard to our, the review of any sexually explicit content. And this one is actually one that many divisions are reviewing right now. We already had a process for how parents or community members, or even you guys, could review instructional materials. This is adding the new requirements that are specific for sexually explicit language. And I will say that some of the things that, and there's some definitions in here that also came, but some of the things that were the topic of, of conversation is, if a main character in a play is of a different gender than, than their birth gender, that by definition is not sexually explicit content, but just by the main character, but actually looking at what is written, what is the context, and things like that. The other thing with this is, and I'm sure we'll have a lot of conversation around library books, the difference between instructional materials that are in the classroom that we all have to read, and the library books that are in our library, and if they're being used to instruct or for content versus if they're in there for just general, kids can or cannot check them out. So, there is gonna be some, I really want you guys to read this and formulate some questions as we go through that particular area there.
Any comments tonight on that? Dr. Day?
One, as I think you've already alluded to, this is kind of a hot, potentially explosive topic, and it has been in many school divisions. The one thing, I'm not, I don't have anything critical to say about this. The one thing that I had a question about, which doesn't need to be answered tonight, it does talk about providing parental access to sexually explicit materials, and particularly copyrighted materials. And I guess my question is, it refers to a process for online access for parental review. Is there a way for parents to see copyrighted materials, perhaps by coming into the division offices, or to the school library, or something like that?
And what Ms. Pugh and team are working on, because we did not have IIA- RZ, which is that process, is a draft of what that looks like for parents. Right? And right now, yes, I know when we do it with the board, we usually bring the materials here, you all come in, you can review any materials that you want, but yes, we do need that process for that. And what, what we've done is kind of talked to neighboring and surrounding and other divisions to find out what best practices are, what are things that they're doing that are working in collaboration with parents. So, we've, we've stolen a couple of things here and there from other places to make it easy, and to enhance our current process.
So, will we see the procedural part of this?
Yes, yes. She did, she gave me that to say, mention that we, we currently don't have that, but she wants to actually propose that we have.
So, we will see that at some point in the future?
Yep.
Okay.
All right. So, IIA board members, please feel free to exercise your ability to raise questions and send stuff in on that, if you don't mind. Thank you.
I think I went through all of her.
IIA B and IIA RZ?
That's the instructional supplemental, I didn't mention supplemental material.
Gotcha, but it's all.
But it's, yeah, it's all the same. She has it, I think she has it on here, she may have mentioned it. New proposed regulation, that's the one that you were talking about.
Is that the IIRZ?
I, I just lost my.
IIA.
RZ. IARZ. Yeah.
Okay. So, Dr. Edwards has presented for Ms. Pugh. Of course, she'll be back next time, and you'll be able to interface with your appropriate questions and get answers, because this is for discussion tonight. And I'm, I'm proud of our board and how we handle some of these more controversial issues, but it is going to require that you take a good look at it and your feedback. but it is going to require that you take a good look at it and get feedback. All right, then, if that's okay, then we will go to D2, which is student services policy updates. Again, this is for discussion tonight, Dr. Edwards.
Okay, and then once again, you have Dr. Edwards subbing in for Mrs. Pugh on the student services ones, and again, she left me notes. So first up is JEB, which is up for revision, and there are some pronoun changes from his and her to just their in that policy. That was the only recommendation for that. JEDRY, which is attendance records and students with disabilities, the committee recommended no changes in that policy. JFC, which is student conduct, her first note under number one, let me just see, make sure, is notification by principal based on code. And you will see where it says prohibited conduct on page two, there is some green language that the principal shall notify the parent of any involved, of any student involved in an alleged incident of bullying. That is coming from code. And then the second reference is to a class one misdemeanor, which is hazing, which is also coming from code. So just an explanation for those two additions there from code. For JFCD, this one's up for review, and she, there is no recommendation for any changes. So that is weapons in school. Okay, keep going. JHC, student health services, and this is a pretty short policy, and no recommendations for changes, and they checked all the cross-reference policies for this one. School attendance area, which is JC, again, there are pronoun changes to make their child, the child, and the student, missing out any pronouns.
I have a question, just related to policy. So this stuff about students attending a school and the attendance area and which they reside, or which they are assigned, that they should stay, there were some exceptions. Is there some exceptions if there's a childcare or parent involved in the situation? Is that just, is that what goes before the superintendent? That's really not stated in here. Is that a decision the superintendent or the administration makes?
Yes. So there's a couple of things that parents can do at the elementary level if there is a babysitter, and we call it babysitter hardship. That used to go to student services, now that comes to my office, and Ms. Pugh is the one who reviews that. There's also on some occasions where, for various reasons, it may be better for a student to attend at one school over another school, and in each case, parents would provide transportation, superintendent placements. So sometimes parents will appeal directly to me for special consideration to go to this school or that school, so yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Brennan.
Yep. All right. The next one is JCRZ, which is the regulation for the school attendance areas, and again, you'll see the pronoun changes and also the change to the deputy superintendent's office, because that's where that's coming into Ms. Pugh, into my office as well. And this is just the procedure for babysitter hardship or change within residents, within the city. A lot of hers were no changes. JCF, or sorry, JCA, student victims, transfers by student victims of crime, and there is no recommended change for that. This is just up for three-year review, and it matches up against code.
Further discussion on any of those? Oh, you got another one? Oh, my goodness.
I'm going by Ms. Pugh's, so she left me very detailed notes, which is JCARZ, which is the regulation for the previous policy. Her notes just say that this is linked student transfer request form, so this is no change, but just making sure that the, the request form is now hyperlinked, so people can get to it. And the last one, JFCBCBRZ, which is a regulation for the interscholastic athletic participation, and this was revised to mirror what VHSL has. So you'll see that on number eight, down at the bottom.
Yeah, and all that's interesting discussion. And, you know, feel, feel free to reach out to Virginia High School Legal, any entity, if you want further understanding of dynamics, you can certainly do that. Any other questions regarding, Dr. Carter?
Just following up on the question that Dr. Brennan asked, asked, so did you feel that that needed to be in there, in the policy?
No, I just was wondering how that, how that fit. I think I understand that from Dr., from the policy and from Dr. Edwards' explanation, it just wasn't specifically there, and I assumed it was part of the superintendent administration's decision to do that, which I think is fine.
So how would someone know that that would be an option?
It's in the, it's in the regulation that goes along with the policy.
The one JRC?
Uh, C-RZ, yes.
RZ, okay.
There's a babysitter elementary child.
Yeah, section D.
Yeah. And these are real-life situations now, and these policies help to navigate us through. Anything else, Dr. Carter?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, anything else on that matter?
I have a-
Mr. Trose?
The interscholastic athletic participation, JFCB-RZ, specifically the, the change in item eight, I just want to throw it out here, because I was a little bit uncomfortable about this in committee. We're, you know, we're dealing with our student athletes here, and originally was saying that students must have a grade of C to play and then be assigned to a study hall, and I understand we don't necessarily have those study hall programs in place for our student athletes, and we're modifying that to say a passing grade. I just want to make sure that we are not harming our, our student athletes just for the sake of them being able to play a sport. I don't, certainly, we all know that, you know, a, a career in athletics is a, a long shot, and for me, an education is much more important. I want to make sure we have the safety net in place for these children, and we're not just pushing them through, oh, you got the D, you got it, you can play, you can play. Just throw that out there for thought. I don't want to make it a big issue. I certainly want our children to be able to play sports, but I also want them to have a goal of getting a, a decent education as well. For what it's worth, I just had a little bit of an issue with us saying, hey, you know, D minus, you can play, and we're not going to give them any support to get their grades up. Certainly don't want to keep them from playing, but I also don't want to forget about them, let them fall through the cracks.
I think the coaches echo your sentiment, and, you know, just our two little championship football teams that both coaches brag about the GPA of their team. They believe in scholar athletes, and they do a lot of work to make sure that their, their athletes are scholars first. And I would like to say that on behalf of the coaches and the athletic directors, that they really do push hard to say, this is, this is a privilege to be able to participate in sports, but, you know, you, you still have to have that academic fortitude, so, in supporting that.
Thank you, Mr. Trose. I do again want to state to the board, if you'd like to talk to Dr. Billy Hahn, the executive director, he's very open to talking to school board members about, and this is coming from VHSL. And so, Mr. Trose, you may want to reach out and get a better understanding, because your point is very valid. All right, anyone else? Okay, we're going to move to D3, governance policy review, and at least when it comes to this student rep to the school board, how many times are we going to look at this?
This is the last time.
Please.
We're doing it by the end of the year. Thomas, by the end of the year, we're going to do it.
Okay. So my, my first one, it's still me, which is policy, now I'm looking on the computer, AD, which is our educational philosophy, and this one, we say it all the time, the importance of and beyond, but when you actually go to our mission statement, it's not written in print, so we're going to add it in print, because the and beyond part of what we do for kids is very, very important for that. KMZ, which is the superintendent's parent advisory, do not recall, we are not making any changes to this policy, it is up for review, and I do meet with the parent advisory.
Have we been given a list of the members of that advisory group?
Because it's superintendent's parents advisory, it doesn't come to the school board for board approval like board advisories. I can certainly share with you who, who attends our meetings.
Okay, so if I, if I really have a reason to know, I just contact you.
We have minutes and everything like that.
Okay. And were we going to say anything about BBBB?
Yep, I am.
And why you, why you pulling that up? I know we had a parent last meeting that didn't, that signed up but didn't get here in time, and, and she wasn't aware of the parent advisory group, Dr. Edwards, I know you are doing a fine job with that, but just, I don't know how we can work on some of the parents that-
If you give me the name, I've invited, like, parents who've expressed interest.
Okay, we'll try to retrieve that name.
We invited the parents that came from the virtual school, the virtual academy.
Sure, okay.
Okay. And then finally, BBBB, student rep policy. After looking at the policy, we agree that the policy language is fine, that we can, we can live with the policy language. We did talk about some procedural things that we want to start doing in spring, and I believe it's March that we want to really start engaging with Mr. Reed and the students, and sort of putting out there, if there are things that we want student feedback from, we'll give it to them in advance, so that they, when they come to the meeting, either as part of their presentation, or maybe a different set, depending upon what it is, that they can share that information with us. But I think the whole goal was to get the student reps more, in addition to sharing all the wonderful things that are going on in their school, but to get students to weigh in on some quality things that we're talking about, and how do we best set the student reps up so that they can do those things. So it's more of a procedural, not within the policy, change. We did invite both student reps, even though they are seniors, to be on the calendar committee to give the student perspective, and also to go back to students and get any information about what's important for the making of the next calendar as well.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards, and I know Bob and I, Bob and I were part of that meeting with the principals and Mr. Reed, and I, I thought it was a very constructive way of how we're going to engage them even more. So no need for any policy changes such, and so I trust that when this comes to us on January the 10th, we will be approving this.
Yes.
Can I make a quick comment?
Sure.
So just to, where credit is due, so this goes back to Susan Morrison, who was on the board for many years and really wanted to look at this policy and wanted to see, you know, should students get credit, should there be some other part of it that would be helpful? And we have had multiple meetings with the principals and with other people, and I think we all felt the policy itself is good, if we can do some other things to facilitate their presentations and interact with students, that's great. So Susan Morrison, wherever you are, we thank you for your input.
I do toll that comment, Mr. Vice Chair, wholeheartedly. All right, so that will take care of our governance policy review for D3, and it will now move us to section E, which is our closed meeting. And I would like for us to recognize that a motion would be in order to convene a closed meeting to discuss the following, as permitted by the Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711A1, in which the school board will discuss the assignment, promotion, demotion, performance, salary, disciplining or resignation of a specific officer, appointee, or employee. Is there a motion to go into closed meeting?
I move that we go into the closed meeting.
Second?
The move by Dr. Carter, seconded by Dr. Day. Any further questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
School board member, Ms. Preston?
Yes.
School board member, Mr. Trose?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Sinha?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Carter?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Day?
Yes.
School board member, Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank our viewing public for watching, we're doing a great work here, and thank you for your support. We'll be in closed meeting now, take a couple of minutes to get ourselves ready for that, shouldn't be long at all. Thank you.